What is Selectmen Budget Workshop Number One? I need to order. Charles, would you lead us, please?
I plead allegiance to the United States and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, welcome the members of the Board of Finance to the, to our table online. I think Lou is online remotely. We've also got Mike Ailes, Veronica Wallace of the Board of Ed. So thank you for joining us.
Morning.
And feel free to, you know, raise your hand or, you know, break in if you have a question at the, at any time. I'll try to keep an eye on the screen, but whatever, you don't hesitate. With that, first up, Becky, the Assessors Office, good morning.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning. What do we got for us?
Um, an overall decrease in the budget. We're requesting, um, we were able to reduce staffing. So all of our, we removed a position. We kind of became more efficient and, um, got a better environment and we only need two people, I think, with our team that we have. So, um, we removed a position. So that's a decrease of seventeen point five percent in full-time salaries. Um, we do still have the field work line item that we like to keep intact for new construction and additions, and that helps us build the grant list.
Can we talk, I just want to stop, stop there on that field work line. Um, yeah, but we, we had been previously paying for that position as a contractor. Um, so you see it under, see the twenty thousand dollars under purchased other services for fieldwork. We have since, um, moved that person to a part-time position. Uh, so that's why you see, uh, the funding, um, moved up there. So the, the, the twenty is a wash, although it's in a different place.
Um, the printing line item, it has increased a bit. That's for our increase notices and grant list books. There's, those are state mandated. There's no way to get around that at this point. Um, I don't know if we'll be able to go digital at some point. Um, I did add a little, about four hundred dollars to try and get our personal property declarations online. We still have to do paper at the moment, but so there's some crossover, but I hope to reduce the cost in the end, you know, hopefully a short period of time for that. Um, the uniform and clothing allowances, uh, contracted, all the union. Copiers stayed the same. Office supplies, we reduced a bit because we had asked for filing cabinets last year, which we actually didn't get either. But, um, permits and dues and subscriptions, since we have one less person, there's fewer of those that we need. Education and training, I asked for the same amount because we did not really get much time to do that this year left, but hopefully in the future we'll get to do some more of that. It's valuable for the staff, I think, and it helps us have the reduced staff. Yeah, stay current with all the new laws that have changed, yeah.
Becky, uh, nice job. I just, uh, when Becky was thrown into her first budget, uh, a couple of years ago, uh, and so, you know, the following year, they challenged her when she had a vacancy, that do we, did we really need more people in the office? And at that point, uh, she was not in the position, she hadn't been there long enough, and assessed it, uh, and in that time, uh, has determined, uh, that, uh, we can put down one, one in that department. So it was great work on your part. Thank you for that, uh, for that work. Um, I will say that, uh, just because you, when you, when you take about, take a position and you eliminate, that work needs to be distributed across the balance of the, uh, employees.
I have a great team.
Good team, and we have taken some steps to accommodate the additional workload on, uh, on the rest of the staff. And we have, uh, applied some salary treatment as appropriate as we have revised their job description. So, uh, I want to congratulate Becky and her team for, uh, taking, taking on that additional work and, uh, reducing overhead, uh, by, um, questions?
I have one quick. We said you put in money for file cabinets, but you didn't get them.
No, we, um, we managed to reduce our paper and reorganize things and.
Okay, because I was thinking with the school transition from, um, the lake to house, that, that maybe, because they're getting some new furniture, that maybe they might have some file cabinets. I mean, maybe, I didn't, maybe they don't need them anymore, but you never know.
Thank you.
I, I just want to make a comment. I hope you're setting the tone for all the, the next departments.
I don't know, this, this, hopefully this is the best part of your, your journey.
It's just wonderful news, and you know, if you got to take on a heavier burden, the, taxpayers, thank you, you know, many people appreciate that when you can keep your budget tight.
Well, I hope we become more efficient and improve some processes so that, you know, that things run more smoothly and we can, it's easier overall, too.
All right, so you set the bar.
Mitch, I knew this was coming.
I want to make, I want to make a general announcement, so this is not just for Becky, but for most of the budgets you're going to see today. So Becky has already discussed the decrease in the, uh, one position. But the other people that are left, they're showing no salary increases as of right now. The reason for that is because Becky's in GSA or other employees in the GEA. In addition to those two unions, the Fire Department and Police Department negotiate contracts are also up. So those four major groups, in addition to that, we have our confidential non-supervisors and all of our part-time employees who utilize the same grid or step schedule that we use for the, um, um, GEA are all being shown with zero increases in, um, salaries, with the exception of those in the Fire and Police who are moving up steps, as you'll see in a few minutes. Uh, so keep in mind, there's a very large amount put in this year for reserve for personnel to accommodate the eventual increases that will be directed. Mary Jane will make those transfers eventually into those budgets after the contracts are, uh, completed. The other announcement is the fact that I have voted into this budget for all recording secretaries. It doesn't affect Becky, it will affect the Fire Department, everyone, and a lot of departments going forward. I have put in a five percent increase on the recording secretary, staying from twenty dollars an hour to twenty-one dollars an hour. A five percent increase for two reasons. One is because that's the same increase that's on the steps for the GEA, also because we've had a lot of difficulty filling recording secretary positions recently. We have a couple of small commissions that do not have recording secretary at this point, uh, that are fending for themselves. So, um, you'll see that in, in multiple, uh, departments showing from a twenty to a twenty-one dollar, uh, hourly rate for recording secretaries. Uh, those are the two announcements, so I wanted to let you know about upfront as you go forward.
And if I may, just one last comment. This year, we, the only tax relief committee dealt, um, quite a bit with, uh, the Assessors Office, and we enjoyed the processes. We've met with nothing but cooperation and, uh, intelligence from especially Becky, but certainly the entire staff. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anything, uh, from anyone online?
Uh, hey.
Good, good.
Looked like Lou was, I guess he was not really, couldn't tell what he was.
What are you, what are you, what are you looking for, helper?
Oh, good, Becky.
All good, that's a nice.
Charles.
Becky, under operational clause containment, under a praiser, the, the last sentence said, you know, you expect some added money to the grand list. And, but you know, for non-filed, refiled inspection, what was an example of a non-filed inspection?
Um, personal properties for commercial properties, um.
Are we going out and doing inspections at this point?
I'm, uh, that's on the list. I'm trying to get that done. Um, like I said, we're, we're cleaning up what we have, um, and hopefully this year I'd like to get out to a lot of our nine files so that we see actually what they have, um, that, so they don't report. So, you know, they might pay the bill, but they'll have a penalty. Yes, yep.
Are we going to give everybody a warning, first, you know, remind you to get your personal property?
We could, we don't have to, but we should. Yes, we, I would like, I really would like to keep a great relationship with our commercial properties. Yeah, 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 yeah. Well, they're supposed to file every year.
I remind you to get your personal property, and so they don't have an excuse of why they need to do it.
Yep, yep. We do notify them every year. We send them a declaration, but yes, to, to the non-filed.
You wouldn't be, yeah, you're not filed with all of it, that's for sure.
Yep, yep.
Correct.
Yep.
Anything else? All set? Thanks, Becky.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You guys? Fire, Fire Department first? Incarceration second?
Yeah, we do the second.
There you go.
You know?
There's one, ready for everybody up here?
Yep, oh, yeah.
The rebound, we have a little case here.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Rebound coming. You got it's coming up, and we see it was covered in, uh, roots that, uh.
Oh, yeah, yes, we have a plan, um, as long as we continue to move money into the, um, fund balance for rebound.
That would have been a question for Becky, because I get the numbers from her.
Good morning.
Mister Commissioner. Here, here, brother.
Morning. Chief, chief, morning. Um, before we get started, I just want to point out a few things, uh, some, basically some highlights, although Mitch did steal one of the points, but, um, the Board of Fire Commissioners met, uh, on January seventh and voted and approved the following items in regards to the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget. One, they approved an expense budget totaling six million, three eighty-three, eight seventy-one, forty-two, which is an increase of three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents, which is a five point five eight percent increase. They also approved ambulance revenue target of one million, one hundred thousand dollars, which is an increase of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars over the present year, which is twelve point, two point four percent increase. And they also lastly approved a capital equipment request totaling four hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars, which was provided, uh, I believe in the packet that you have, but that's also in priority or preferred order, um, should you make, uh, some adjustments in that. Uh, a few other highlights, um, there is no increase in staff personnel in the recommended budget for the twenty-five, twenty-six year. Um, as you heard from Mitch, there are no salary increases as the union, uh, contract expires on January and negotiations are to begin shortly. Um, and as he said, there'll be, uh, money set aside. The only exceptions are for personnel step increases per the existing contract and the movement of one firefighter EMT to a firefighter paramedic level. That was in-house. Um, that was one person internally that, uh, accepted the offer to be trained, uh, so there'll be an increase there. The budget does not include any ARPA funds, as had been the case in the previous year. Uh, the budget includes utility increases, and again, per the Finance Office, um, it's a five percent. Um, the expense budget is based on twenty-four, twenty-five year-to-date actuals and three-year averages. And lastly, which is the, it has a huge impact on the department, um, is that the Fire Department responded to four thousand, five hundred and nineteen calls for service in the last year, which is an increase of three hundred and twenty-nine calls over the previous year, which is about seven point eight percent. So I just wanted to get those highlights out in advance of going through the numbers and the line items. Um, and as we go through them, we have the documentation or anything that you may need to, uh, fill in any blanks that you may have.
Thank you. You're welcome. Questions? Can you characterize the, can you characterize the increase in the, the calls? What's driving the increase?
Um, it's a, it's a number of things. One is mostly in the medical area because of the assisted living facilities, the Yale Guilford, the Apple rehabs, um, and of that nature, and, and just normal calls that we have as well. Um, I would say, and we had this discussion at our board meeting, that it's somewhere between sixty-five, maybe a little bit higher percent of our calls are medical related, which also drives our revenue stream, um, when we do transport to, uh, Yale, New Haven, or Middlesex, or wherever it may be. So it's a little, it's a combination of both, but again, it's not limited to just ourselves. We can break that down further if, if it needs to be.
I used to see A R and C O was there almost all the time. Are we doing more of that now, or?
I, I would, uh, uh, unless you want me, uh, I would.
Go ahead. Tr- yeah, transporting out of Yale, one-two-five Goose Lane, uh, is that the question?
Well, I just, I, I, I used to see my, you know, just, you know, probably, I used to see AMRs parked there, I know there was some.
The answer is that we do do a lot more transports out of one-two-five Goose Lane. There's a lot more emergencies coming out of, uh, prior to one, life-threatening emergencies coming out of Yale Guilford, a dramatic increase.
I remember there was always a little competition or whatever, whatever.
AMR is still not, not non-emergency or interfacility from, from there.
From bed to bed.
Bed to bed.
Bed to bed, they're doing those.
Okay, so it's however it's.
Right, okay. Yeah, the hospital system's busier and busier. They've gone on diversion because they're so full and they have no more capacity more and more within the last year, uh, where there's just so many patients being seen out there.
Yeah.
So as we get into the line items, um, and I'm not sure if you have the same document in the draft, thank you, um, you'll see in the full-time salaries account, you have an increase of ten thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars. Uh, again, I mentioned early on, we have step increases for the existing contract, and I believe we have four personnel that will be, um, going up in step. And then we have an EMT to a paramedic classification increase, and that's roughly, um, that's one individual, we just say one individual going to that classification. I'm not sure the exact dollar amount, but the total, uh, in that is ten thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars. Part-time salaries, there is no increase, um, at all. Um, the commission clerk, as you heard from, um, Mitch, a thirty-six dollar increase for the town contract. Um, overtime, and again, that's, that increase is based on the past three years of, um, average. Um, stipends, I mentioned to you earlier on that we have an EMT going to a paramedic. EMTs get a fifteen hundred dollar a year stipend. Um, paramedics get a forty-five hundred dollar, uh, stipend, so there's a difference there of three thousand dollars. Um, the replacement salaries, and just as, when we always, you know, talk about this for the, uh, uh, a lot, but the replacement salaries encompasses a lot of different categories, which the Assistant Chief can break out for you, but we have a two hundred and seventeen thousand dollar, uh, increase. And again, three-year averages, and we also had to replace, uh, an individual so that that paramedic that was an existing firefighter EMT could attend paramedic training class as well. And then we include the new holiday, Juneteenth, uh, and then contractual holiday increases. So overall, right now, you're looking at a, in a salaries account, you're looking, uh, or the salary line items, excuse me, you're looking at two hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixty-eight cents, which is four point nine five percent. Before I move on to the variables, is there any questions on any of that that you'd like to ask, or that we can provide information?
Maybe you're going to get there.
Yeah, go ahead, Beth.
Uh, Brock, Brock has a question from the audience. Who does?
Hi.
All right, Brock, go ahead.
I was wondering on the stipend line item, does that include the volunteers, or is that someplace else, or don't we offer it anymore?
We do not offer volunteer incentive. The stipends that you see are strictly for the career staff, firefighter EMTs, and firefighter paramedics.
Can you remind us what they are for again, please? The stipends, I forget what they're for.
In addition to, for maintaining their licensers, uh, licensures and the expertise that they provide.
Okay. For the benefit of the public, is there any way that you could just give an overview on what's, on what's involved for, um, the criteria to be a paramedic, the how many training hours is, are involved? I, I think it's a, like, two thousand hours in training?
They, yeah, it takes, uh, and, uh, I'm sure the chiefs will correct me if I'm wrong, but it takes almost two years to be certified or be licensed or, uh, to be a paramedic. Um, paramedics are allowed to do a lot more, uh, advanced life, um, support, uh, things on a scene versus an EMT. Um, paramedics can, uh, inject, they can give injections, uh, they can use, uh, uh, life-saving skill sets, I want to say bone drilling, uh, but, uh, they can do a lot of different things that, they're like an extension of a doctor.
But the training is intensive, is my point.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's why I said two years, and it's probably, I think, is it over eighteen hundred hours or two thousand?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yes, and that does not include, that's tr- that's the, uh, that's the actual classroom, and then you have the ride time, you have the hospital med control that you have to obtain before you become a paramedic. So there's a lot of additional pieces of it. So yes, Veronica, it takes a long time.
Time, yeah. Thank you.
That answer your question? Yeah?
Yes, thank you.
I started, I was going to, I was starting to bang on about this one. Now that replacement salaries are over a third of the whole dollars, if you perform an analysis, a deep analysis to show, can you show what, why that makes better sense in having additional personnel?
Yes, um, we have, we can, first of all, the commission and the administration continues to assess and evaluate whether it makes more sense to hire personnel or to go with replacements.
Yep.
Remember with, but when you hire personnel, not only are you paying, um, for the salaries, but you're also paying a huge amount of benefits. So you look at the cost of the replacement salaries, uh, salaries versus hiring, we would have to hire four in minimum.
Yeah.
And possibly more.
Four per shift.
So, yeah, yeah.
The, um, so the amount this year is, has grown significantly. Is, is that more because you anticipate having to pay more, is that to close the, the planning budgeting gap that we keep in our hands every year?
Call volume, I think, has a big piece of it. So, uh, as the call volume increases, obviously the revenue's going up as well.
Yeah.
Um, trying to make sure we're staffing appropriately, appropriately, where we're losing staff to backfill that staff, uh, to maintain our staffing levels.
So just to point out, because every year this, this goes over by, so I'm asking if you're trying to close the budget gap? No, the answer is no, you, you think, you expect to have to pay more.
Well, if, one of the down, pros and cons, meaning, you know, hiring more staffing, if, if, uh, call volume, you know, peaks or steadies out versus paying for replacement staff, we're also including the, uh, full-time benefits that staff. So potentially, uh, it's more responsible to pay more in replacement for the period of time of growth, and if that tapers off.
Right.
I think what Bob is asking.
It's more of a budget.
Right. What Bob is asking is, is, are we increasing replacement salaries to increase for the gap that we have every year? And the answer to that question is yes. We're trying to compensate for that.
Because my point always has been, if it's, you know, we're not professional firefighters, you're not in the whole business, but every year that runs over. So my point of view is if you need the money, ask for the money, rather than show anybody who looks at it that you're not budgeting correctly. So this looks like you're closing it.
Yep, exactly what it is.
I got a question about that. How many staff is your minimum per shift?
Ten.
Go open it.
Well, you know, I always wonder each year if, you know, sometimes you can run a shift with, with nine.
No.
And, uh, get the same answer?
Well, let, let's dig a little deeper. No is an answer, but is not a very explanatory answer. Uh, why ten versus nine or eight? Uh, just, you know, we're not going for long, long dissertation, but, um.
Go ahead. Oh, thanks, Mike. Thank you. Uh, I can take care of it, but only you do it. The way we distribute resources, um, uh, two, we have two of those staff in North Guilford, yeah, covering the North District, uh, since two thousand and eighteen. That was a big piece of coverage, making sure we're meeting our response times.
And that's paramedic, right?
Uh, up to the ALS level, correct, a paramedic and an EMT.
You're going to need those guys there no matter what.
Correct, um, but what we did, so we still maintained the eight downtown. Some, uh, two target things for us is response times, making sure we're responding effectively in the given amount of time, and then also, um, providing the right number of people on, on site of a structured fire, um, within eight minutes. So those are two target goals that we report out at each commission meeting. Um, the response times in North Guilford from two thousand and eighteen, we were at thirteen and a half minutes for average response times in the North District. And once we staff that station with the two extra firefighters, like two, two more firefighters, a paramedic and an EMT, we reduce our response time to under nine minutes, which is the national average for having a paramedic on scene for, uh, cardiac difficulty breathing for life-saving measures. Um, so maintaining the eight out of Fire Headquarters, two of those are also in an ambulance, uh, paramedic and an EMT in an ambulance, uh, and our essential firefighting staff between an engine, a rescue, and a ladder truck. So reducing any piece of that or part of that would mean taking, if we took one out of North Guilford, we can't just leave one remaining up there, they would have to come back town, town. So the question of taking one person or reducing staff downtown would potentially mean not getting the ladder truck or critical apparatus on scene within a period of time, and also the number of firefighters. So when we applied for Safer in two thousand, when we were awarded Safer in two thousand and eighteen, prior to two thousand and eighteen, our effective response force, which is, that's the number of firefighters on scene within eight minutes, uh, we were at twenty percent. So we were meeting the time, or we were meeting the mark twenty percent of the time. So once we completed the Safer, uh, implementation from eighteen to twenty-one over the three years, we were at sixty percent. So that was our target goal. How far can we go in three years to increase our number of firefighters so it's safe for them to operate? Um, and with more and more call volume also means the ambulances, the North ambulance is the backup for the rest of, you say backup, meaning that if the primary ambulance from downtown is out, that ambulance is now coming out of North Guilford, which lessens the level of protection for North Guilford when that ambulance is busier and busier. So given the response times and the effective response force, we report out at the commission meeting, say we're, we're holding steady, we're doing the best we can. Our biggest issue is Monday through Friday daytime with the increased call volume, uh, during those peak hours. So we're working, working together to collaboratively find solutions of how we can implement things that would potentially try and reduce things or offset.
Thank you. That is that explanation, yeah.
One, one clarification, when you say structured fire, it just, does that entail? I'm not sure if I understand it.
So, so, so structured fire, like if somebody reports their house is on fire.
Yep.
Um, so the house is on fire, uh, we respond to fifteen people is the, the recommended number of people to have on scene within eight minutes to be able to effectively and safely manage that operation. And we're doing it with, you know, ten, the volunteer staffing at night and on weekends absolutely helps us increase our numbers.
Okay.
And that's where it helps, so.
As opposed to like just an open fire, maybe?
Oh, yeah, no, 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 something reported, structure, uh, you know, structure assignment, anything within the structure that's considered fire.
Okay.
Other questions? I think I was, rest one quick thing, um, it may answer a little bit of what Bob's concern was about the replacements in both, and you're going to see this in several budgets as well. Both the overtime budget, replacement budget are a bit higher than you'd expect percentage-wise because they lost the ARPA grants. The ARPA grants were offsetting, partially offsetting some, so your, your overtime, their overtime dollar to dollar is three point eight two percent increase, but it shows a twelve point seven because of the ARPA grant laws, and their replacement costs were seventeen percent higher, which shows it nineteen point seven because the ARPA grant laws, just, just to clarify for people.
Do you have the dollar?
Yeah, which, which one you want?
Both of them, either.
So the ARPA grant for the overtime was sixteen thousand, oh, seventy-two and fifty cents, uh, on the overtime, and the ARPA grant for the replacement was twenty-five thousand dollars even, and that information is in your salaries.
Yeah, you'll see the sheets.
Salary sheets that I put together.
Perfect.
I'm just reading right from that.
Got it, okay. All right, you'll, you'll see the ARPA amounts in the.
Got it, okay, all right, you'll, you'll see the ARPA amounts in the twenty-five. And just to keep in mind, that's six, six months.
Only six months.
You know, so two years ago would have been twice that, and for fiscal year twenty-four, would the ARPA grant would have been twice that. But we cut that in half for this year because we, in order to use ARPA funds for salaries, it could only be done until December thirty-first. So as of January first, just this month, ARPA could no longer be um, used to offset salaries.
I think you may recall that the reason we used ARPA funding in the fire department was because of the additional burden placed on the fire department during COVID, uh, particularly all the clinics you guys were assisting in and running and so forth. So that's, that's why we used ARPA funds uh, for fire department, um, right from, right from jump, as soon as, as soon as.
Right, and replacement salaries because we would have firefighters out with COVID. And, you know, there were, we, you know, so we took that into consideration, Mike did an analysis of that. And we were able to come up with a number, um, which is where we got the original number for the offset from uh, the ARPA funds.
Anything else?
I guess I got one more question, this comes up across different departments, but the new vehicles seem to be costing us more than the old vehicles. Whereas, are you seeing that, that the newer equipment is more expensive?
Double, double.
Sure, some cases.
Especially as you order, right now, I think, and chief, correct me, we, we have a, an ambulance on order that we haven't even been able able to get a chassis for, um, that's overdue and I, I, how long is that now?
Well, it's out a year now.
It's out almost a year.
Yeah. The vehicles generally.
Vehicles in general are. But, you know, a, a regular pumping engine a year and a half ago was six hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Okay, today they're one point two million. A ladder truck used to be eight hundred to a million dollars, now they're two point two million dollars.
It's still two or three years out.
And two or three years out.
Eventually, we're gonna need one.
Eventually.
All right, anything further for anyone online?
On that, that piece?
Thank you.
Um, moving on to the, uh. Did I hear something? Variable, um, the farm marshal expense line is stayed with no increase. Uh, civil preparedness, uh, is, there is no increase. Utilities, uh, like all of us at our own homes, we're seeing an increase of eight thousand five hundred and sixty dollars. And again, that's per um, the finance department recommendation, the increase in the utility line. And also the addition of a shift filling software package that we bought, which makes it easier and more efficient to fill shifts. Um, fuel, um, a five thousand dollar increase, uh, and again, uh, that's due to the additional call volume. Um, you heard me say upfront that we ran almost three hundred and twenty-nine calls or three hundred and twenty-nine more calls last year. Um, that increases the over the road time, the, the fuel that's, that's used. So we do have an increase of five thousand. And again, we also, I, I want to just go back, some of these are, are based, or most of these are based on three-year averages as well, uh, including the call volume increase. Copier lease, there is no increase. Health and welfare, um, there is an increase of twenty-seven hundred dollars there and that's contractual. I believe we use Yale occupational health for that. Um, so that's a, a contractual agreement that we have with them. Um, fire prevention, there's no increase. Operating supplies. Again, uh, the increase reflects the three-year average, but more importantly, the cost of EMS, um, medications, uh, replacement equipment, call volume increases is what's driving that number as well. Um, I, I'm, I'm sure that if, um, well, I will just say that a lot of times, some of the uh, medications that we have on the shelf, if they expire, we have to dispose of them and we have to buy new, um, if we don't use them. Now, that doesn't mean that we stockpile so that we throw away, you know, you know, huge quantities, but we make sure that we have enough to um, stock the vehicles, especially the advanced life support vehicles. Okay, ambulances, uh, squad, et cetera. Um. Marine division, there is no increase. Um, CMed, which is actually now is Valley Shore Mutual, uh, Valley Shore provides our membership. There's no increase there, and that's an annual contract. Um, education and training is the same. That provides for in-house training as well as bringing instructors in-house when we can to do it right here in Guilford, so that there's not an additional expense related to mileage or overnights and things like that. Um, vehicle maintenance, and this goes back to what Jonathan uh, asked a question, there's a thirty thousand dollar plus increase in that. And again, that reflects the in, uh, a three-year average, but call volume as well as vehicle responses. And um, again, it's very difficult for us and our, our can do a great job of trying to, you know, prevent any major catastrophes on any of their vehicles. And as you, um, know, we have both large vehicles and we have small vehicles. Um, if you have a, a, a major, uh, a major uh, issue or repair on one of the large vehicles, obviously, the cost is gonna be much higher than it is on a small vehicle. Try to do the best we can um, to forecast that, maintain it in advance so that we don't have a crash or we don't have a major. But um, um, you know, this year, thirty thousand dollars is what we forecast to need to maintain the fleet that we have uh, on the road. So that being said, um, that budget, the variable expense is eighty-two thousand, two, four seventy-five ninety-five, which is a nine point two four. Overall, our request is, I mentioned earlier, honest, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents, which is an increase of five point five eight percent, again, less, no increase in salary due to contract negotiations. Answer any questions that can on the variable expense side?
Uh, this is a, a, a large question, it's not just on the variable.
Yeah.
Keep referring to a three-year average.
Yeah.
My mind goes to something different than what I see on the paper. Three-year average would be, you take the three years total.
And by, by three.
But you are talking, I think, about a three-year average increase?
The three-year average actual, actual expenditures from finance.
It is actual.
If you, I, I have it up on my screen, but I, I had invited to you a, a printout of all the three-year at, the history. In three years, it's on, it's on board pack, if you bring that up. So, yeah, if you look at replacement salaries.
I bring that question up because most people, if anybody's on, you know, in either public is gonna say three-year average, how can a three-year average be, you know, a twenty percent increase? So that, that is, thank you for that explanation.
Yes.
Correct, and, and all three years at this point are post, pretty much post-COVID?
Yeah, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, yeah.
Okay.
And again, we're all.
And also looking, uh, just to throw in, again, looking at the year-to-date actuals where we are as well. Um, try to, you know, annualize those to see where we might forecast out where we're gonna end up as well. So you try to, you take that into consideration on top of those.
And keep in mind that, again, that doesn't have any um, cost of living.
Right.
Increase in that, in those lines as well. So with the cost of living, we most likely be adjusting those um, after the contracts are approved.
Uh, it's fair to say on many levels, we're still paying for COVID.
We're seeing an increase in COVID again, so. It's out there. Any other questions on that piece?
Um, now, I think, again, I think we have to look at this in a holistic manner. You pointed out that you're increasing uh, revenues by about ten percent.
Twelve percent.
Twelve percent.
Hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Um, so that, you know, that, that, you know, the additional expenses are, are, are counter, counteracted by your additional revenue. So I, I think that we need to consider that. The other pieces, um, you know, yes, there are, there's a five, five point five eight percent increase before we talk about wage, uh, wage, not inflation, but the wage improvements, right? The good news is the wage improvements are against, you know, two-thirds of your budget. And those aren't gonna be in the five percent, so the, the overall, the, the percentage against your total budget is dramatically from five percent once you, uh, once you factor in the increases on standard.
Overall, the bottom line?
The average, the average, the percent, the percent change. As we had, like nine point two four percent in, uh, in, um. In lower half.
Yeah, in the lower half, right, yeah.
So those numbers will come down a little bit, at least the percentages.
Will be here. There will be some. The last, I'm sorry, go ahead, John.
I apologize, I probably ask this one every year, but you guys buy your fuel separately from the other departments, right? Or do you buy it together?
No, we, our fuel, uh, prices come from finance.
We, we go out to bid uh, every December uh, for fuel, or everybody.
Well, townwide?
Yes.
So we kind of expect that same increase across the whole townwide, we'll see.
We see, we see a nominal increase, but I don't think.
This is also usage-based, so the calls.
Prices are down.
The prices are actually, they're down from last year.
They're down.
Our usage is high, and the usage is up.
Okay.
All right, anything further?
Actually, just to make sure, I, I know this was submitted earlier, but the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six capital operating budget request, again, this is in your packet, it's in priority order. Um, the one thing I would just point out is that the first line item is a defibrillator replacement. That was, this is the fifth year of that lease, that lease agreement. Uh, so that is something that we have to at least follow through on, uh, to make sure. Um, the others, um, again, in priority order, ambulance remount, uh, replacement of the motors on our, our boat. Um, hazardous materials, equipment, uh, technical rescue equipment, EMS glide slopes. And I'm not going to tell you that I know exactly what a glide slope is, so I'll let uh, the chief tell you. But uh, that's included in there as well as maintenance to the outside uh, door and sidewalk at the uh, fire station. And for those that, and was it twenty-one, twenty-one years, chief, twenty-one years old now? Well, that's something that we need to, that we need to maintain.
We have the backup for all of those items already.
Yeah.
We've cleared up, so we discussed capital.
Just one, one quick question.
Yes.
On the Marine Ten replacement motors, that is a regional service that we provide, what are the opportunities for grants to, to offset those?
So we, we've applied the last two years of support security grant. Um, we have one more crack at it this year, um, to apply for that grant. On the, the, the hard part from the federal grant side is a lot of them have been reduced by ten percent. And there's a big shift to cyber for the priorities for port security grant funding. So we've applied twice, our application scored very well last year. Uh, so we're gonna apply again one more time and potentially, uh, we can cover seventy-five percent of the cost if we get the award. So we're trying, uh, two years in a row already.
And to that point, Matt, anything that comes out that we're aware of or that we know that's out there, we're applying for, it was appropriate, um, to hope, you know, to help offset any, any expenses that we can. So we're not, not sitting back waiting for it to come out.
Fully aware that, uh, your team has done a great job in, in finding funds and, uh, applying for it. Most recently, the, the congressional directed spending, which is nearly a million dollars for our radio system, the radio system. So you guys, your, your team is very well versed in finding and, and getting grants.
I think it's good clarification, you said it scored well, did, did we get the grant last couple of years?
No, uh, so there's, there's national priorities, uh, and because ours is maintenance and sustainment of the existing asset, um, it's like a priority four, so some of the stuff for cyber-related uh, grants were the highest because they got a, an additional points on the thing. So, um, doesn't mean, and we score locally, uh, within sector Long Island Sound, and then we also score nationally. Um, just, we scored well locally, but nationally, there's only so much money and the priorities went to the silent projects, whatever related. So we keep trying every year.
Oh, no, that's appreciated, I just was curious if you got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I mean, you said that, that was, we're in a priority order.
Yes.
I was just looking at the sidewalk replacement, i- in that, um, for the safety of the people working there, but also that's used as a voting polling place. And, um, sidewalk replacement might not be a priority, but if someone slips in and polls.
The sidewalk that's being replaced is not accessible to the public.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yes.
Just thinking about that.
Yes, the public sidewalk is excellent.
All right.
All right.
I hadn't noticed it, cause that's why I vote, but I just thought, I'll bring it up.
That's a good point.
Anything further? Thank you. You want to move on to communications?
Yeah, sure. Let's flip there. All right. My glasses, just sitting in the back, and, oh, maybe, I'm almost there, I can't keep the glasses.
Already there.
All right, uh, so we'll go line by line through communications. Um, full-time salaries account, uh, went from three, three twenty-nine, four thirty-two to three sixty-two, uh, one twenty-nine. I believe, was that, uh?
It's been adjusted.
Okay, it's been adjusted.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so that, that didn't pay the, uh, in, you know, so that went from, I'm, I take that back, three forty-seven, nine eighty-five to three sixty-two, one twenty-nine.
And I'll just note, those are the adjustments you approved at your last meeting.
So four point one percent increase, uh, and that's contractual. Um, uh, all right, part-time salaries went from, uh, pretty sure that was the same.
Yeah, it's the same, okay, yeah.
So, uh, seven thirty, two 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 to, uh, seven thousand three hundred and twenty-two, so zero percent increase in part-time salaries. Uh, overtime, uh, also went up, uh, with the wage increase, let me find that, went from, um, a hundred and ten, uh, one, six ninety-six to one thirty-five, five fifty-four, twenty-two point five percent increase. Um, telephone went from two forty-seven, nine fifteen to two fifty-five, three fifty-three, so a three percent increase in telephone. Uh, maintenance contracts, uh, one fifteen, two thirty to one twenty-four, eight forty-six, sixty-five. Um, uh, eight point three five percent increase. Equipment maintenance, uh, stayed the same, ten thousand, uh, and zero percent increase. Office supplies, uh, fifty dollars, no increase, and education, two hundred and fifty dollars, no increase. Uh, total increase was six point seven percent.
Any questions?
Just curious, is the OT also the three-year average for communication department?
Uh, overtime, one of the contributing factors to that was an extra week of five days of vacation for Patrick, Patrick, uh, one of our employees. So increased another week of vacation. And the wage increase. There's a couple of things, though, I was gonna point out, the, uh, the, the maintenance contract was up eight percent. Uh, maintenance contracts up eight percent. Uh, one of the contributing factors of that maintenance account, uh, going up was our Cradle Point cloud management system that we use to manage, uh, all of our devices, uh, increased number of devices, but allows, uh, stuff to be managed remotely instead of the employee driving around to the vehicle. So our public safety IT, uh, where, uh, before he may have had to go out to the modems and actually put a PC or something on the modems, he can cloud manage, uh, stuff, so creates efficiencies for time management, uh, for, for IT, uh, staff. Um, the other piece of that is the Cisco multi-factor authentication. So, uh, using, and, and I'll, I'll break this down, cause I had to get some, some easier understanding of what that does. But basically, it allows, uh, outside access to our network portals, so, uh, to our portals. So more and more, um, trying to enhance or beef up our cybersecurity, uh, not just two-factor, but multi-factor authentication to verify, um, who's coming into our network and its access managed with multiple levels of verification, um, which was important. And then, uh, also this, uh, same thing similar with this was a Cisco Umbrella DNS domain name security implementation. So, but this was some critical impact to enhancements in cyber or some more robust cybersecurity within that maintenance budget.
Thank you. Uh, I wanna take a page out of Bob's book, uh, on the overtime, uh, are we getting close to a point where an additional body would, uh, less expensive, uh, we've done that analysis?
We, we have, and.
It has a bearing, yeah, okay. Looked at last year, looked at last year, we look at last year. And, uh, it just changed a little bit dramatic this year because of the additional weeks' vacations, I just thought that might be.
That wasn't it, no ARPA effect there?
There was a small ARPA effect, it was fourteen.
Oh, sixteen thousand dollars. Oh, sixteen thousand dollars. No.
No, it was, I mean, overtime, it was a fourteen hundred dollar, fourteen thirty-seven, uh, taken out, so their, their increase, it's not, not significant. The increase is twenty point eight, twenty point nine, it goes to twenty-two point five based on the ARPA offset.
Yeah, overtime salary is also going to be good.
Yeah, but her, like, her number, yeah, and overtime, twenty-two point five, because of the wage increase.
Have they collected everybody online, anything, uh, Lou, Mike, Veronica?
I'm good, thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be chatting. All right, engineering, your pitch, it's, it's, come on down.
Good morning.
Good morning. Overall, um, you know, our budget is really not changing, we are in a state where our contracts are expired, so that, um, those will be negotiated, um, but I do want to take a moment just to discuss that a little bit, um. The engineering department's been very busy over the past couple of years, and we currently have about over twenty million dollars in projects that we're managing. Most of that, we've, we've actually acquired the grants for the town to have these projects move forward. Um, we also do in-house design for smaller projects, we've been doing, um, inspections of major projects, including Nut Plains Road this past summer. And it became apparent to me at the end of twenty twenty-four that we didn't have enough of us to go around, so, uh, we had Nut Plains Road under construction, the State Sheet Water Main, uh, project under construction, the Lee's Island Culvert under the construction, and the Grass Island Shack project under construction, there's two of us to cover for construction projects, it was a bit of a stretch, so, um, trying to be a little more inventive and thinking about things, um, you know, it occurred to me, my predecessor, he, as you know, was also Public Works Director, he had a number of different employees in departments reporting to him, and he had resources available to him to, to allocate to things, I don't have that benefit. So it was me and Michael running around a little crazy, uh, so, um, taking a step back, uh, we have an administrative assistant who's very, very talented, very smart, and he's been very good out, you know, but I think he's being underutilized for our department, and so thinking out of the box and realizing that the building department has been able to expand their own staffing levels to kind of support themselves, uh, which the administrative assistant for engineering used to, you know, do a lot more work helping them out with their, their, um, you know, permits and things, he still helps a little bit, but uh, they have, you know, a lot more staffing in their office now. Um, I'd like to, and I, you know, I approached Matt, I talked, talked with Mitch, I'd like to see that administrative assistant, um, position actually elevated to an engineering technician position. Um, so that person would then be able to assist with things like on the recycling coordinator, I'd like to make that person the recycling coordinator and help more with the day-to-day questions, you know, things for the transfer station recycling, to help with being able to send them out to do inspections on street excavation permit projects and sidewalk projects and things like that, so having that flexibility to have that person be out in the field as well as taking a little more responsibility from some of our ongoing work, um, would be helpful. Uh, so we're hopeful that that would be something that we can achieve during the, uh, contract negotiations, so that we have, um, a little more staffing available to really manage all these projects. Um, you know, if the public works project moves forward, that adds another, you know, thirty million dollar project that, you know, we have to manage, so. You know, it's a, it's a lot, it's a lot for one department, we're happy to do it, and, um, but, you know, I'm just trying to think out of the box without adding, adding more, more staffing, but, uh, right now I think that could help tremendously. Uh, so we're hopeful that'll be a successful endeavor during, uh, contract negotiations, also, uh, Assistant Engineer Michael Chicharella is expected to, um, take his PE exam this year, as you know, we hired him right out of college, he's been a great asset to the town. He's really learned a lot, he stepped up and really took on things that, you know, he didn't have experience doing, and he's done, done a good job, so. Uh, hopeful with, you know, that step up too, he should hopefully see a little better compensation for, for his, his work.
And, and his accreditation.
And his accreditation, so.
Which is typical.
Yeah, so, so I just wanted to kind of set that safe, even though it's not a number in my budget currently, I just want to, you know.
And one, and one of the things I want to point out is, um, this is not a temporary lift, it didn't work.
No.
While Nut Plains Road will be done next spring, um, there's, there's Jimmy Corners Road, uh, there is the sidewalk project going to the East River, there is, uh, the, uh, the collaborative bridge, these have all been funded, and these are all going to be worked, so this is not a temporary.
The dam project, we have, we have a number of future construction projects, so it's not like last year was, you know, like Matt said, a blip, it's, we see our workload, you know, continuing to, uh, at this pace are even greater, so, and, and we'll continue to also do the in-house design work that, you know, Michael's been doing for some of the sidewalk projects and smaller projects. We also assist, you know, public works with a lot of, you know, drainage projects, we do the designs, the permitting through wetlands and things like that, we'll help them with onsite issues when they come up. You know, we oversee the sidewalk program for the town, uh, stormwater compliance for the town, working with all the regulatory agencies, and then ongoing, we have floodplain management, building, um, planning and zoning, and health department permit reviews, street excavation permits and licensing, uh, stormwater reviews for compliance, uh, recycling, um, the recycling coordinator is always manager for the town. Um, we also serve with, uh, State Street's Task Force and Waste Transfer Station Committee, you know, to try and support them as well, so. Uh, we have a lot going on and, and we enjoy doing it, but, um, a little help will be, would be great, um, so we'll, we'll see how that works out. Uh, keeping that in mind, basically, you know, my, my budget's staying the same, you'll see a slight difference in that I reduce the road striping and signs, uh, budget, um, because public works now has some capabilities to do some of that work in, in-house, uh, so that's a savings there. I'm trying to allocate some of that, um, savings to, um, number one, permits dues and subscriptions, if Michael gets his PE license, that'll, two eighty-five will cover his licensing for the year, um, education and training bump up to continue to not only have Michael do training, but if, um, Adam's position moves up to technician, he's going to need some additional training as well, and obviously, um, vehicle maintenance costs are just going to continue to go up with more use of the vehicles and they're getting a little older. Um, so that's pretty much, you know, our budget, operating budget in a nutshell, if you have any questions.
Questions? Jonathan?
No.
Oh, okay, I thought you were getting ready to speak. Uh, anyone online?
Yeah, all good.
All right, I'm going to assume Michael and Rick and, uh, is Rocka still there? Okay.
No, I guess I got one, but I just curious, so you, you think of taking an admin position to a, um, engineering tech position? Do you know how much it would cost?
I don't know that yet, that's, that's still.
Part of negotiations.
Next year thing, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, we'll be going through that with negotiations.
It would still be, I mean, my understanding is it would still be an hourly, um, uh, GEA position, so therefore, we discussed the, uh, GEA negotiations, which have already begun, this will be discussed in the, right slide.
Okay.
You have a position.
That position doesn't exist in a description.
Yes, yes, that's, that's the job description.
Just, just so you know, there used to be an engineering technician in the, in the engineering department, so that position, I believe years ago, was Kevin McGee.
That was decades ago.
Yeah.
That hurt, he was not.
Yeah, that was, uh, that then moved into other things like, uh, facilities, I believe, and then into environmental planner, and, you know, never was backfilled, but like I said, there was a lot of changes, but who was responsible and had resources available, and based on, you know, going from town engineer to town engineer, public works director, having facilities report to the engineering department, a lot more things used to report to the engineering department, you know, back in the day, engineering used to actually do septic systems and all that before they hired Dennis Johnson, I believe, so, you know, there's a lot of things that have been moving around, moving parts, uh, yeah, moving parts, and so, um, but with just, so now it, just being really, you know, two plus an admin, it's, it's restrictive into what we're able to really cover.
The clothing allowance, that's just for one person, correct?
Yeah, that might have to go up, that, that's a good point, I didn't add that in.
Wouldn't all three of you need clothing allowance?
I don't get clothing allowance, I just ruin my clothes.
Okay, forget you, but the other two.
Yeah, yeah, so that's a good point, Michael does get the clothing allowance, if we're asking, you know, if this position does get elevated.
It's in the contract.
Yeah. Add it in.
All right, anything further? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Park and Rec, yeah.
Oh, boy.
I'm just here to look at.
Absolutely.
My first one. Good morning.
Good morning, Pam, good morning, Pam. Being here, sorry, couldn't play, you had anticipated, started up a little earlier, but.
Okay, so it was a little interesting to me, because when I came in, I saw the fire going line by line, and I didn't really expect that, and then of course I saw it a little different this way, so.
That's fine.
So she does not need to go line by line?
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, so what you do, but what makes you comfortable?
Okay, so.
Say what you want, and then the last question, if they have something.
So this twenty-six operating budget is relatively flat, um, however, one of the major budget drivers that I do have here is in the full-time salaries. Um, I am requesting a foreman position to help, um, with our parks, um, department. I feel like there's a crucial link that's missing between the parks supervisor and the maintenance staff. And, um, as you all know, our parks supervisor, Tony Assely, is a terrific, um, employee, but he's hands-on, he's in the field. He's not only supervising, but we had to pull him out of the field multiple times, um, in my first year of experience with him, we had multiple capital improvement projects, so I could see how I was disrupting his daily day continuously to get these capital improvement projects done. So it just became a, um, eye-opening, um, a relevant thing to talk about a foreman and why he didn't have one, and how helpful that would be to him to, um, kind of improve the operational efficiencies, and to help, um, the other crucial thing is that we operate, when we're full staff, we're full staffed at ten. And that's with three seasonal positions. And those three seasonal positions have been very difficult to fill on a continual basis, so that's another reason for looking at a foreman position as well. Um, this year, my first year, um, we had to go back and forth with trying to fill these positions. Um, they're low-paying positions, they're seventeen dollars an hour, so you can see, we tried to get them from April through November. It has proved to be very difficult, um, therefore, we don't operate at full staff. Um, and, and from what I understand, over the years, Mitch would know this too, that it's been, it has been difficult, it's not just this past year, but it's been the last few years, which has been really hard. So I thought that this would be a really good addition to our staff, we'd also be offsetting this position by eliminating one of the part-time seasonal positions, um, so that was approximately thirty thousand dollars would be offset by asking for the sixty-two thousand dollar position. So that was in the full-time, I, I guess I would ask if there was any questions in regards to that.
No, it's a pretty good explanation, um, the, the offset with the seasonal worker, I was about to go to this question, uh, would it make more sense for us to look seriously at the seasonal wage structure, so that we could attract, uh, or potentially better candidates, uh, as opposed to, uh, the foreman position, if you were to take that, the seventeen dollars an hour, which is barely working wage, uh, particularly for anybody trying to live, uh, in, in our, our town and surrounding communities, uh, that's, that's, that's a challenge.
I agree with that, the only thing I would say is I, I'm feeling like there is that crucial missing link between that leadership position underneath Tony, so when he's not here, or he's out of the field, I have that lead position, I feel like we're missing.
If something were to happen to Tony, we'd be in big trouble, as far as being out in the field with, so to have someone supervise him, I hope you don't mind me interjecting there, um, I think it is prudent, actually, it's something important to look at, um, we're all irreplaceable, but not if you don't have anyone to replace you.
I need a lead, I can see that, like, we have our maintainers, they're out there, they get a schedule, they go out and do their daily routine, but you need a, a, a leading position that's going to make sure that.
Is it still, is it anticipated that Tony will still be a working department head, or?
Yes, no, he'll still be, he needs to be, I mean, the amount of land that they're covering with all the schools, all the athletic fields, it is quite astonishing how much they do.
Pam, in conversation we had once, she pointed out that some towns, the fields management for the schools are under the school's budget, but in our town, the fields management of the fields are under the Park and Rec budget, so that's a lot of land when you think about it.
Uh, coming from where I just, we had the same amount of crew then, and, um, and that we didn't have any schools to deal with, no athletic fields, it was just parks and all the regular and different things we have to do, we're continuously pulling our guys, here's a good example. When the playground projects happened at, at Bitner and at Jacobs, we pulled our staff out to help, you know, remove the equipment to save the town all that additional money. We bought the, um, boats out on Lake Q, you know, it's their job to haul them out of there, or fix them, or do what is up, continually changing atmosphere, the more we do with events, the more they do. Which I don't, I don't anticipate slowing down, I anticipate doing more.
Next up, Matt, any other questions?
Just want to add, add a few things there, um, with the, just some historical things, we, you just, you understand completely, the, um, part-time or the seasonal parks maintainers, uh, Pam was correct, we've had some issues in filling those positions, um, the current salary is eighteen dollars an hour, and that I expect to go up based, once again, to GEA contract pages, or the lowest levels go up at the end of that contract, we'll make adjustments there as well, um, with the parks maintainers. It's interesting, though, that we have six main park, full-time parks maintainers, three of which, half of them, started as part-timers. So we had an opportunity to see how well they worked before we hired them as full-timers, so it's actually been a good training ground, if you will, we've also weeded out a few people, uh, through the years, that we thought would be a good full-time person, and when they had, were on, working us for us seasonally, uh, did not work out. Um, so I'm, I'm not sure we want to necessarily eliminate all of, I know Pam, Pam must eliminate one of the, um, seasonal people, I wouldn't necessarily recommend limiting them all, um. Unlike the request you heard before from, from Janice, which is to keep a, a s- a current position and upgraded, Pam's position here is a new hire, so in order for us even to be discussing that in terms of the, um, uh, GEA negotiations, this board and the Board of Finance is part of your budget deliberations, we'll have to determine whether that's a position you want to add or not, this is one of the few, uh, new hires being, being asked for on the budget this year, so to see your, be aware of that.
I think we should proceed with creating the capacity to put that position in, uh, regardless of what our decision is, to include it in this year's budget.
Well, it's a placeholder in here, at sixty, in, in sixty-two thousand dollars, is basically, uh, Pam saying, that's what I think it should be, so we just threw it in there, we'd have to, if, if the board agrees that this is a position, we will, uh, i- uh, inject into the, uh, Park and Rec Department, then we would negotiate, put that position on a salary, um, which, which i- in fits in with the, uh, GEA schedule.
What I'm saying is, yeah, proceed.
Yep.
In your negotiations, as if it's going to be.
Okay.
Because whether we fill it or not, we're creating the capacity for it without having to go back to, to negotiate outside of country. I think it is important to point out to anybody who's listening again, as, as Pam's described, your mandate is larger and wider than what these challenges. And I don't know if it's worthwhile investigating whether this, if this should be some, just, for me, transparency, if we just be billing for bed, or, you've got the people, you've got the expertise, you've got the equipment, it shouldn't perhaps be something that they need to manage, to better manage of it. But, um, budget-wise.
It's, it's left pocket, right pocket.
Indeed, yeah, but I, I think it's important to point this out. It is, um, the, one other thing, when I talked with Pam on this originally, you said, one of the things I always talk about when it comes to management, you know, the, the structure is span of control. Given the, given the responsibilities Tony has, is, uh, you know, yes, he's, he's one of ten, he's one of the ten. So his span of control, he's managing nine individuals without a straw buster, that's it, okay? Um, and that, uh, in the private sector will depend, uh, depending on what, what job description you're in.
Okay, and that in the private sector will depend, depending on what job description you're in, is pushing the limits in terms of effectively managing a team. But I've seen it much worse, and I've seen it much tighter, so. It all comes back to you can't manage what you don't measure, what you can't measure.
I got a question. I mean, I'm kind of used to cost benefit analysis in the private sector. Have you sort of said, hey, if I had this leadership position, I'm going to get some kind of benefit? I mean, I think you could hire maybe, what, two seasonal people instead of you?
It's an overall picture is what I gathered since I've been here, you know. In terms of taking him off the grounds, I'm just looking at it as a whole. I'm continuously taking him out of the field. And then, and then our guys aren't being supervised either, right? So it's, it's, it's just an overall look of what I've experienced since I've been here, and I feel like there's a missing piece there.
It's a work. Essentially, what I understand is it's a work. I mean, he'd still be, you know, running machines or whatever.
So he wouldn't get him in for long. He's not going to come sit at a desk and do his job.
But he's. Oh, yes, oh, yes. I don't know. We need him in the field.
So you're literally adding a field.
Absolutely, yes. It's just, it's the amount of time.
Hire a level of field so that he can watch what's going on around him.
I don't see that Tony has any time to take off. Even when he takes off, he's still going to be the leader. Yeah, but that's, that's why I find it's crucial.
One more question. Have we had some kind, someone who's in a leadership role or foreman before?
Not for parks maintenance, but we do in DPW as a couple.
It's not an unusual position in that type of work.
Right.
Just a quick question. Would you foresee any possibility of creating some upward mobility for the current employees? That there was potentially be someone within the organization that could fill that role?
If a position is created, we would advertise it, you know, as we do any position, and they would have an opportunity to apply. And determination be made by the selection committee, whoever's Pam decides to put on that such a committee for selecting one. I'm sure Tony would be.
Mitch does that? Go internally?
We do, except for the most recent job posting for the police department. Almost every job posting we do just goes out to everybody internally and external at the same time, to save, to really save time. You get external applicants at the same time. We can decide to go internally first or interview the same, both internal, external applicants at the same time, which we've done many times.
Okay.
So everything else, pretty much, I mean, I guess I would highlight that we have a large savings, which is great, under the utilities account. We apparently had some agreement with Board of Ed for the weight room. So the natural gas, the electricity and the water was all being built through. Yeah, our department, so there's a considerable.
We're going to get the Lathropalso.
Yeah.
We were able to reduce that by twenty-six thousand dollars. And then everything else in here is pretty, you know, we had a few thousand dollars here and there for pest control and so, or Blue Earth. The new food scrapping, which is a couple thousand dollars. Other than that, it's very flat.
Field maintenance equipment went up substantially, field maintenance and equipment. Is that materials or hard to?
So field maintenance.
So fertilizer costs.
Right, so basically there was a little increase in the dump fees. There was a general repairs where we added a trailer dump, a trailer pump fee for fifty-three hundred dollars. We also added twenty-five hundred dollars that Mary Jane had suggested, instead of it being in the capital account. It's called a small capital request. It was suggested to be put in the operating budget, so that is also reflected in there. We also increased our Cortigans, which we found, we spent twenty-five thousand dollars this last fiscal year. So I basically balanced that out a little bit. It was fifteen thousand and twenty-four, it was seventeen thousand twenty-five, and I felt the need to increase it to twenty. So that's really an explanation for that.
Anybody else have questions? No, you don't know if that's a. Anybody else online?
All good. Thank you. I like the idea of bringing on non-commissioned officers. I mean, that helps spread the responsibility, get more work done more productively.
Thank you.
I would just like to add that Pam had come here, this is her first budget presentation, which is hers. And she has done an outstanding job for Park and Rec in her first year. I'm only a commissioner and I can't keep up with her, okay? She just is outrageously good and we are very, very lucky to have her.
I would agree with her.
Pam had a tough act to follow, but she did it.
She does. She did have and does have, and she's doing great. She's really doing well. So thank you all for listening.
Thank you.
Everybody.
Thank you.
Make you cry.
Don't cry. Don't cry. Don't cry in baseball. Do you want to stand there and make a?
No, I'm asking him for an extension cord for my.
No, I'll be comedy standup.
I can't reach the post to plug from here.
Tony. Good morning. Ready. I guess I want to start by saying, the first thing. I don't know who came up with it. Did you want to do this? It's better.
Just started to talk.
No, 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 I was just going to talk about the organization now or this that we've changed.
Okay.
You don't care about that? Okay.
We'll talk about that when we get to.
Gotcha. I was just going to start off. Want me to go through everything? Just the stuff that's changed. Should I go through it?
Want to highlight?
Yeah. I'm going to go through, yeah, the highlighted stuff. Obviously diligent community is.
I got to bring that up. They're not, it's not on board pack.
We don't have it on board pack, so which?
Oh, okay, well diligent community is going to be replacing board pack.
So what light iron are you talking about? Start with that. Software licensing.
Yep, under software licensing. That's going to be, board pack is going to be switched into that. Diligent community, which is four thousand dollars.
We're not switching. It was an acquisition, but.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. We're not switching, right? Yeah, or diligent community board pack.
So the four thousand dollar increase is not anything that we're getting better. It just went up.
No, actually, it didn't, it didn't change much, right? It didn't change much. Yeah, I know. And I think they're giving us some, we had a few issues and they're giving us time to keep using board pack, so. The debt, I'll just go on the next one, even though I don't have it highlighted. Debt book is for you guys, right?
Debt book we use for our, I'll send you this.
We don't, we don't, we don't have that.
Right, we don't, it's.
You don't have the detail.
Yeah, it's up on ClearGov, but that's, so.
Sorry.
Yeah, we will send this.
That's all right. I mean, if you guys want to talk about it a little.
We're here.
Yeah.
So debt book is the software that we use not only for debt, but the new requirements for the audit, the, that I've talked about for the subscriptions and leases that we have to do for the audit, so that cost is going up.
Nineteen thousand seven hundred.
And this budget includes everything for Tyler, all of our Munis.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I was going to do all that.
Okay, well, you started in the middle.
No, I just started with the new stuff, the new stuff I started with. Uh, Smart Sheet is another new one. That's for the finance department for purchasing. They can do like workflows of, when they go out to bid. They could even, darling, so she's going to test that out, and it's possible they could use that in various departments to, like, when it comes time to do a bid. I don't know fully how it works. If she was in here, she'd be able to explain it better. Tell me how much you are some of these. What's that? That which is Smart Sheet, it's a new.
Seven hundred dollars.
Seven hundred. Yeah, I was going, it's one, for one user, just going to test that out. About debt book, is that new or we have that? We have that.
Yeah, we have that.
This is a three-year agreement, actually, for debt book.
Can I make a suggestion? If we could focus on the twelve, the items that are increasing, if those are new items or if those are increases, the forty-six thousand.
Okay, so let me.
It's possible.
Which one are you looking at?
I'm looking at the.
Overall.
Overall.
Overall in this lineup, so what are the big changes?
Well, looks like ClearGov went up three thousand. And.
Munis is up four thousand, that's our financial software.
For, the debt book is up about thirty-five hundred, around there. So in this software licensing column, all our Tyler's in there for Munis, Tyler Technologies, TCM, Training. Quality data, which is for the tax and assessor's office. And the E quality, it's also quality data, but it's their camera. Those didn't change much. Any questions with that?
Just trying to understand what's in the forty-six thousand dollar increase.
Appreciate.
I don't know.
Yeah, it's all just. It's various different ones. It's not one whole, yeah.
Of course.
But there are increases that are new.
Could we do something?
Yeah.
For everybody.
I got a.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
So while he's making copies of that, we'd like, let's talk about the salaries. So just like Mitch has mentioned, so there's not, we're not showing an increase in wages. However, we are going through the process of upgrading one of the employees in IT. Not Tony, but our other employee. He has demonstrated initiative with education. He's seen most nights here taking certifications, and I have a pile of about ten certificates of new training that he has taken specifically to better our software systems. He manages many of the systems that we have, that we in the past have used contractors for. He's taken that on himself, and so we are looking to reward him for all of this. And we are increasing his job title to an information systems engineer now with an increase in salary. Along with that, which we, it's actually, the negotiation's just going on this week. We don't have it in these numbers. But it's something that we are looking with GEA. We are initiating that now, that is going in now.
Quite honestly, this is part of a retention strategy.
So it's a seven thousand dollar increase that we will be updating the salary sheets and this budget as we move forward.
Yeah, I was in.
That's okay. Yeah, well.
And of course, I forgot to do on the page, whatever.
And just, and that seven thousand dollars is offset a little bit by something that you would have paid an outside person to.
Well, over the past few years, while Jeremy's been here, we have used the contracted less and less and less. He has taken over much of that responsibility.
And it's all also kind of in sync with what the job is doing out there, the salary amount, I mean.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
The new salary we've given him is coincided with several positions, yes.
Okay, so.
I got a question. Can you spin a? What exactly, I know we use Zen City, a couple of polls and that type of thing. What exactly are we using Zen City for?
That's a good question. That's a good question. We currently work with Tracy, Karen, and Anne on an evaluation of whether or not we want to continue to use it. We've used them for social media monitoring. We've used them for polls. I think Pam did a couple of polls in the communities, and those come as part of those services. But quite honestly, we're looking at the efficacy of it. We're, the next thing that we were going to do was to put a community-wide survey out as it relates to the POCD to gather input from the community. And Anne had a couple of other potential uses for, for getting community engagement, community input. There was also the ability, which we haven't moved forward, to start to highlight some of the projects we're going and create a tracking mechanism through Zen City, the Zen City platform, to update folks. Well, the examples I might give, and that would be, that would be a perfect opportunity to utilize for what we are doing with the five oh five Woodfield Street project to be able to, to be able to expand and communicate to the community what steps are being taken, etc. So it's, it's, it's an avenue for that. However, we are Tracy, Karen, Anne, and myself are looking at the efficacy of it.
Good.
Good.
Yep. Land use software. So you have some Tyler Technologies in there as well, which is their EnerGov. They changed the name of it. It's EPL, it's called now. And their E review subscription, their AutoCAD is in there. Blue Beam is used for like a PDF. It's a PDF reader, but they could they'll get schematics, they could make changes and collaborate between all of them on what they're doing. And that links into EnerGov.
It's probably a good time to talk about EnerGov. We are anticipating going live at the end of February on the, on the online permitting software. I think most of the department heads over in town also are anxious but dreading the cut over because it's going to create some challenges. It's going to be, it's going to be due to the community to utilize, but after a couple of years, we finally have a point where we're ready to make the cut in the conversion. That will happen, as I said.
Matt, Tony, I have a quick question on that. Where is that information then stored? We're not actually keeping things on servers if we make that switch, right?
That is still all Tyler Technologies. We're hosted with them and that's where our data is.
So, so forty-five years from now, somebody wants to find something. We got to keep our fingers crossed that their system is still functional and they can get that information.
Yes.
There's no, there's nothing resembling.
Yeah. It's a data center, so I'm sure they're doing tons of backups of everything. Is that what you're asking me?
It is what I'm asking you. And in the corollary to that is presumably we're going to be paying for that. And I'm not saying this is the wrong system. I think it's the only system that any of us have any option to anymore, right? I mean, if you're going to want to keep lots of data for a long time, we're going to be all, and I mean all, everybody stuck with data centers, right?
Right, right.
And what reassurance do we get from them? This is not really specific to this budget. I'm sorry, I'm pivoting a little bit here, but what reassurance do we get from them that will be around in decades from now?
We don't have, we don't have any, Louis. It's a commercial enterprise, but you should know that Tyler is one of the two or three largest municipal software providers in the, in the country. Which is one of the reasons why we went with them, that we anticipate a longstanding track record with them.
And they've gathered up so many different businesses that they've purchased court software. They have a, I don't think they're going anywhere, but.
And I know the contract does allow us to extract any of our data information at the cessation of a relationship with them. There is contract language in there with, which the attorneys would probably have a field day with, but that would be a process. And no doubt it would be a challenging. No doubt it would be a challenging one if they wound up closing the doors, um. But uh, they, they like uh, the big, big data, data providers. Uh, have multiple data centers across the country where our information is backed up uh, in other locations. That's a standard way that these huge data centers operate. Uh, but I can't give you any certainty that. You know, we we would get the data back, there are protections in the contract. That suggests that we can get it back, that we will.
No, I I totally get it, and the the alternative is, you can't keep paper forever either, there's downsides to that too, and it's kinda crazy, but. They're right, decades from now, that it will, that will be the, what we have, and if we need it, we're gonna get it and keep our fingers crossed that they're still functioning.
It's not, it's not different than uh, the upcoming conversion we're gonna make uh, with Office Free sixty five.
Yeah, I know.
Everybody's heading towards this cliff.
That's coming too, this this year.
And 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 most of the software vendors are killing you on individual licenses as opposed to these hosted services, they've basically moved the. Moved the industry in a direction that they wanted it to go.
And to make more money.
Right, and and we also don't have to buy hardware.
Right, you are, you you are benefiting, yeah, you're benefiting as well, it's it's.
You do the hardware for nothing, the supplies.
Exactly, the printer costs you a hundred and supplies are like four hundred.
But I I don't hear, you 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 don't have any, sorry, go to a NAS or local, anything like that.
Oh, I have four of them already. I I had an ass. Yes, I can tell you when I first started, I'm gonna.
The evolution.
I'm an adult, um, Munis was here. Uh, updates. I wouldn't have time to do anything right now, because I was always constantly updating Munis, making sure it worked. I think one time we went down for like three days and. That was not good. So then it evolved with, when they started offering, keeping the data at their data center. I'm like, this is the route we should go, we don't have to do backups anymore. Now, as far as like you said NAS, we have all our documents, each user, that's where all that's going. And it's all virtual, um, virtual servers are. So it's been working.
Just wanna know if you refresh BoardPak, this is up on it.
You just did it?
We just did.
Nice.
Technology. Like a general question, so the software sort of. You know, I I work in the business a little bit, I'm not same as, same as you uh, analyzing the software, but. Is there something that triggers you to evaluate the software? And and for instance, I remember I used to have to buy software. And if the cost went up by ten percent for the next subscription or maintenance, they would, they would force me to do like a study to see if we should switch. And switching is no easy thing, sometimes. So married to it, but. You know, to try to create, you know, some competition and and to think about, you know, at some cyclical, cyclical point. Is this software worth it for the talent, should we be going to the competitor, should we be thinking about going to the competitor?
The first thing I look at is like, what are they charging? You know, for their software, if it's comparable. I don't think about it, because now you got the cost of migration cost. That could jack things up a lot, and it all depends on what you're doing, like if you, if we say we're gonna get rid of Munis and Tyler. That would, I don't know what that would even cost, but it would be a lot.
Well, this definitely snowballs, I mean, you know, we're getting more and more involved in technology year after year, but uh, some, something that triggers an evaluation every once in a while.
I think we tend to evaluate our software regularly, you know, especially when we're putting the budget together, like debt book went up, we had an extensive conversation about. Whether, you know, what we're using that for and 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 how um. Important it it is to to what we're we're doing, and of course, it it's part of an audit, and I, I think. Somebody on Gatsby should be paying for it, because every town has bought debt book to to do their audits now, so we do look at them regularly. Um, it's something like Munis, um, where we, it's it's so far reaching throughout. Um, the the town, what we look at from Munis, I'm always looking for ways to utilize it better than we are now. We're paying for a lot of power through the Munis Tyler system that we're not necessarily utilizing. Uh, because it's just things that. We're not, you know, we don't need to use, but we're always looking at ways where we can. We currently have the employee self-service, we're looking to implement that, because we're paying for it, we wanna see, you know, how that works. So we analyze the programs not just from financial, um, how they work. And and how we can work with them, so we are, we we do that, we don't have something that triggers us. To force us to, you know, we're not, we're not forcing Park and Rec to look at RecTrack, you 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 know what I mean? We know how it's used, how we use it, we've, we've used, we utilize that software, again, RecTrack for more than we originally had it. So we we try to efficiently use the software to compensate for the increases that that we're getting as well. So we look at it in different ways, but no, there's no trigger that forces a department to give us an analysis. Um, it's more informal, no, I'm just, I'm just trying to explain how our process works.
If somebody asks for a piece of software too, yeah, first thing I'll say is, do you have others, is there other ones that do the same thing? You know, why are you picking that one, and and I I just automatically do that.
Right, because we just added something new in the assessor's office, we had that discussion. Something that in the, in the current year, you know, so, you know, they they say we're gonna add software, well, it needs to go through our IT to make sure that. It fits on our platform, that everything's gonna run effectively, that we're not already doing it in some other manner. Uh, you know, that that type of analysis we do.
And I'm not here to throw a first stone, I'm just saying that if you find, you know, if you can do that evaluation, sometimes you find, you know, we've got two users. This is no good, this is not giving us enough benefit, and the more you do that, I mean, it's very troublesome for us. I work in a huge company and we struggle with software costs.
And like Matt was talking about with Zen City, you know, they're looking at how we're using it, whether we're gonna use it, whether it's efficient to use it. Again, all of that discussion, um, you know, goes into place before we move move forward, so.
And I will make a comment to to lose uh, earlier uh, comments that um. Just just once in my history, as we had insurance company and they got a new data, um. A new data system that would pull in all the records for the insurance clients, so they were, everything was computerized, you didn't have to go to microfiche cabinets. But they decided to keep two libraries of microfiche anyway for DR, for emergency. So, you know, I don't know, if we'll experience that with Tyler or some big provider where. You know, we don't have the data here anymore in our hands.
Well, we do, you know, it's a paperless world, but that's absolutely not a municipality, we are, we have paper. Um, you know, going back a number of years, based on the library, uh, the state library's recommendation for retention, so. A lot of times we have that paper backup as well as what is being stored, you know, in the. So we don't, we don't scan it and throw it away, we stick it down in the basement.
I I I think I'm just going off, because a vendor just like quadrupled our maintenance.
No, it's it's a, it's it's a large budget and, you know, it it gets bigger and bigger every year and the questions are good, you know, we're, we. Try to manage it to the best of our ability as as well, so.
And we did move a lot of stuff into my budget, that other.
Correct, right. So every time, every time another depart- department wants to add something, it comes into IT. So, whereas as it should, because they should be managing, managing the installation, you know, how it's used, making sure it's updated, all of that, so. Um, and it helps us to quantify everything that we have in one place.
I just wanted to make a small comment back to EnerGov and the permits. I'm I'm thrilled to hear that it's gonna go live, and I know it's, there'll probably be some bumps in the road, but. We know that the public who who uses this and often will, are gonna be, even if it's a little rough in the beginning. Our customers are gonna be happy, correct, I'm looking at all the.
They'll probably know how to use it more than us, because they probably are using it in other towns.
There will, there will be folks who will be thrilled with the capacity to do it, because they can do it from the privacy of their office or their den at home. And it'll be people who are so used to coming in and saying, take care of this for me, right? And that's the transition that's gonna be the most difficult, particularly those who are technology challenged. Uh, we will continue to support them, help them enter stuff, we will have a terminal in capacity at the desk. Uh, uh, at at the counter, not the desk, uh, right, uh, to to assist folks, there's gonna be a learning curve. Um, and uh, there will be people who will be happy with it, no people will not be. Uh, but one of the things that we are anticipating is uh, the workflow process that exists within the software. Which moves pieces along, because for some of you who've not had the experience of working. The, you know, to to pull a permit for something, it can be difficult, uh, and there are multiple steps. What I said, like, when the other morning, we changed the fee structure because of a change in how uh, billing uh, permits are. Uh, are are uh, now uh, distributed, which require. A zoning permit or zoning review, never did before, uh, so there, this this will hopefully. You know, we're anticipating it's gonna create a workflow process that moves things more quickly through our office, so. Um, things don't wind up sitting in an in basket like happens at my office, and oh geez, that's a. I've been here for, dude, you've been here for a month or.
Yeah, so, so now I'm sort of contradicting myself, but um, with, there will be people who will love this change, but as you said, you will. Transition, because you have people at the front desk who help people all the time now. So they will, you will help someone who says, I can't, I can't figure this out, and you won't just say, go over to that terminal and do it immediately.
And I'll talk a little bit more about it.
Okay, all right, I'll stop talking.
Something off on the current year budget numbers, if you compare via the spreadsheet, the original thing we had to the new sheet. There's a difference, and I think it's, we're we're not gonna be able to look through and see the increases in software licensing. Unless we know what that is, so I know this is something maybe you guys could take back and report back to us. Yeah, there's a twenty thousand dollar jump, so it, this sheet doesn't support the big increase in service contracts. That we're trying to understand.
You know, that I gave you, gave Tracy the wrong one, because hers does have it.
Okay.
In my.
So I, rather than putting anybody on the spot right now, I'd be happy to just.
Right, it's not, the spreadsheet's not.
Well, I'll go back.
Thank you.
I revamped the whole thing, I probably missed a.
So if you look at, if you look at that spreadsheet, what, um, we we took, just lost my computer. We we took the software licensing and I asked the staff to break that up, um, because it's such a large bucket of money, it's. Overwhelming, right, so as you can see, if you look on your spreadsheet, you can see how we broke it down between finance, land use. Um, other departments, um, you know, and then, so, um. What what we may do in the future, uh, Darlene and I are talking about potentially, you know, adding those line items right into the budget. So that each pocket is better managed on a, on a budgetary basis. So, so this year we started to figure out how that might look, so on your spreadsheet it looks that way, although we did keep the one big number. Um, at this point, but um, it was, it was getting unruly because of so, so much technology now that that we handle. Um, you know, we're on to two pages now, where it used to be a half a page, you know what I mean? Um, so that's in the future.
You want me to talk about these new things right here?
Do we, do we have a second page or not?
Oh, it isn't that?
Yes, it will, thank you.
Okay, so. Under system servers. And software support, there's two, we added in wasabi, and I'll explain what that is, that's not what you eat. It's offsite, uh, like Lou was saying, uh, for backups in the cloud. So we're trying to follow what's called the three, two, one rule, we have an offsite here, we have our normal backup. But then this will be in the cloud where we will store all the backups if needed. And then TeamViewer, which is a small amount, that is gonna help us. Uh, remote into any type of laptop. Or whatever, that we put it on, that it's not connected to our domain, so we can't. Access it, like somebody is, uh, like the golf course, that's an example. We use TeamViewer for there, because they're not connected to our network, so if they need help, we can remote in and help them. Yeah. So that, that's a small dollar amount. Uh, nothing else has changed in the rest of the, right? Computer hardware.
It's a thousand dollars.
So would you find, go ahead. That went up a thousand, um, computer supplies are like any of our checks, forms, toner, microtoner. Toner's expensive in general.
That's the big, that's the big draw, uh, driver for that increase is the toner.
Yeah, there's, they've, they went up, so we had a, we had to go up.
Differential toner for regular copy, copy release, but I don't want, the copy release in itself, but we have to purchase a toner separately or.
Darling can explain probably better than me, but some of the contracts include supplies and some don't.
Our copiers include the toner, um, but this, these are mainly for our check printer, which we. Don't wanna use the copier for, can't really, I'm, well. I shouldn't say can't, I I don't think we wanna go outside of our department to print off checks. And um, the other one is our, our color copier that we have in our office that we use for. Um, different projects and stuff, it's, it it prints so much nicer than the the copier. Um, and we also use that to print all of our Munis reports too, they are designated to go to one particular unit. And that's that machine. Um, that's hardcoded into our software.
We we don't have that many like standalone printers. So I don't think the cost would benefit, like I think I know what you were asking, if you could get like a contract.
Print management thing.
Yeah, I don't think we use enough to to justify it.
Got it, okay. All right. No other increases beyond that one, right?
No.
Okay. Other questions, comments? There are none. I just wish it was a little better.
Don't worry.
All right. Anna, come on up. Good morning, Anna.
Don't mind me.
Good, okay. No, right here. Oh, you're all in a room. Right here, right, yeah.
That's why they're glad you went up. Good morning.
Okay, I will try to be quick.
That that would most likely be appreciated.
Oh my gosh, okay, so I don't really have a lot of changes in mind, it's pretty much, you know, kind of, kind of the same. Um, expenses, travel, basically the same. Um, advertising, just gone up a little bit, only because, you know, the advertising expenses go up every year. Copier leases have stayed the same, office supplies have gone up a little, because like, basically what Tony just said, the toner, you know, prices go up. And we have two, um, uh, prints, you know, extra printers that require usually. An extra toner cartridge every year, so, little increase in that, um, office equipment stayed the same, permits do subscriptions. Um, I do have a notary commission, my notary commission expires in December, so that's an extra sixty dollars for that. Um, and education stays the same, I am asking for a little extra in recording expenses here, I would like to. Uh, add another user license, um, for the resolution three that the software we use downstairs for the, um. Land records, dog licenses, um, because one of my assistants does not have that on her computer, so. Basically, she's, you know, bouncing back and forth between indexing station and her computer. Um, like if she gets a phone call and she's at her desk and she gets a phone, somebody needs to, she needs to look up a dog license or. Question about something else, she's bouncing back and forth between, um, and when we had first acquired this, got the system, like. Twelve years ago, I think, we were trying to keep costs down, so we didn't add that extra user fee. But I would kind of like, and that's additional, uh, two hundred and thirty-five dollars a month. Um, but the recording expenses kind of. Fluctuate from year to year depending on how much, uh, recording in the last couple of years, we really haven't used that much in our budget. Um, you know, that I asked for, we, we use less, so I'm kind of hoping it will just get absorbed into that. Um, and we are doing a little better, um, revenue-wise, um, this year, we. Um, so far we've taken in, I think, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in conveyance tax, so we're up on conveyance tax, which is really nice. Um, that seems to be coming back, and we did have one really nice, good sale in September, October, I think, that. DVR, Gilford Commons, it was all for, I think it was over twenty-six and a half million dollars, so we got quite a good.
The original owners were appealing the assessment.
Yeah.
And you skipped over the wages, it looks like you eliminated a part-time salary?
Well, that was, we kept that in the budget, um, Mary Jane and I were talking about that, I had that in there because for the, um. Presidential election, you know, four years ago, we needed all that extra help, and then this year I thought we might need it, but. The early voting kind of took care of that, I didn't need to get any, anybody else in here to help out, so we've kind of like left that alone. I didn't ask for anything extra because this year I definitely shouldn't need any extra help.
We did keep the overtime line at the eighteen hundred dollars, even though we didn't use that, so just in case, there was some, you know, so we. And then I talked about it, and we just eliminated the one line and kept the other.
Right, 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 and obviously salaries, we don't know what the increase is gonna be there because they're all under negotiation right here, so, we have no clue. That's pretty much it.
Excellent, any other questions? Thank you.
Oh, thank you, I told you, I told you.
The, and the salaries are going up four point one, not salaries, uh, revenues, four point one three percent, revenues, she wouldn't mind if her salary.
I know, I bet.
Registars. While, while the registrars are walking up here, for, uh, those that are unaware, didn't see a press release, um. We do, we try to have an employee of the month, um, it doesn't always work out every month, but. Recent, uh, winners based on recommendations by three other town employees. Uh, for the work they did during the presidential election with the early voting. Which, uh, in Gilford was as successful as any community I have, uh, talked to with my peers. We had just shy of fifty percent of the total vote showed up at early voting, which, uh, which was phenomenal. So, uh, because of the work they did, preparing for that and executing a plan that went, I think flawlessly, I. Literally had not had a complaint in the Selectman's Office about that process, so congratulations on the job. Well done and, and deserving of the employee of the month, so, thank you.
Thank you, very nice, thank you.
Does that fifty percent include absentee or that's fifty percent above absentee? It's everything that wasn't on the day of.
Seven thousand people voted, uh, early voting.
Amazing number.
Yep, and, and, like, the first morning was like the opening of Walmart.
And Natalie, finally, and Natalie was our greeter.
Yes, and they wanted to get their vote in first, so. Um, okay, um, but we have a, uh, some increases in every line item. Uh, the part-time salaries, which is us, well, it's designated, part-time salaries, poll workers, and, and that's. A big increase there. Um, that includes training, that includes early voting, which happens every November now, every primary. Not at referenda. I don't know if you wanna expand upon that, or we'll go on from there, stipends is six thousand. That's a new line, line item for the registrars. Uh, and the Board of Finance has to find what we should get, or, uh, before each election event. Kiandres, we went up a little bit because of the envelopes and paper. A primary, and we have two primaries, I hope we don't have two primaries, I don't, hope we don't have one primary. But we did increase it a little bit, November election expense that went down because. Uh, it, it is a municipal November. And, um, probably the ballots, we won't need as many, and it won't be complicated, so it won't cost as much. Spenses travel, the same, contract, service contract, you know, that's, um, for our tabulators. So, uh, we increased it, don't know, we're supposed to get new, brand-new tabulators. I have no idea what the maintenance would be on that, but we kept that in there. Copier lease that's given to us by the Finance Department, office supplies, we increased because if we do have early voting. Those little labels that go on all the envelopes, uh, they're quite expensive and that's an increase. I can't think of something else for that, office equipment, um. Permits and educational training, about the same, the office equipment, um. The, the new tabulators will come, but, um, we don't know if our. Steel blue bins that are at each polling location will hold the new tabulators and ballot boxes. So it's really up in the air, nobody seems to know anything, um, so we might need new storage bins at all the five locations. Um, and.
I could, I just wanna. Talk a little bit about the part-time toll, uh, the part-time poll worker salaries, uh, the Board of Finance is currently evaluating. Um, the, the structure, the salary structure for the registrars. Based upon significant, uh, additional work that has been levied upon them by the early voting. Uh, and, um, the Board of, thankfully, it's the Board of Finance that determines those, not us, uh, the elected official salaries. Um, but there's a, there's an acknowledgement, I think by the Board of Finance, Bob and Mike and Veronica can talk to this. Um, that, uh, we need to formalize, uh, a sa- a, a structure, a payment structure for them to recognize. Uh, the additional work that goes into it, uh, above and beyond what they have been doing for years before, so that process is underway. Uh, and either Mike or Bob or. Mike's on the committee.
That's also in that stipend line.
That's what I wanted to talk about.
I thought it was reflected in the stipend line, because six, I was on the committee too, and six thousand, I think, was the number we came up with. And it was very obvious to us that their, uh, workload had increased dramatically because of early voting. So, I, I think that's our recommendation.
Yes, that's a, that's a number that was, that the Board of Finance.
I don't know if we ironed out every detail last meeting, but I think we laid it out in.
Right, so there's a, there's a structure, there's a structure that the committee put in place for, um, stipends for all the various types of work. That the registrar voters do, um, they estimated based on what twenty, twenty-six fiscal year would look. Like, what we have, we estimated that that might be three thousand, um, dollars for each of the two registrars and. Um, I was asked to put that in, in the budget and, and that's what, what we have, so that structure, um, is in place now. Um, the registrars will submit that request to me. Um, and on behalf of the Board of Finance, I will approve that based on the structure that the committee, um, came up with and. Move forward, I, I, I think what Matt might be alluding to, um, I won't speak for the Board of Finance, but I will, no. Is that in the future, they may consider possibly rolling something into a new salary structure. For the registrar voters, um, instead of having the stipends, but that's for future.
Yeah, I think that comes down the road anyway, right?
Yeah. Yeah, that is the intent, that when we look at the registrar voters' salaries again, um, at that time for election. And then we would go ahead and consider both the salary and the stipends and whether they should be rolled in together or. Um, or stay separate, but, um, that won't happen until that, that time.
I have a question, I, I think most of this increase is because of early voting, I'm not wrong. Okay, and then I'm not as attuned with the state as I should be, but, um, are they thinking about making early voting a little bit less of a. Period, I know it was very popular and you executed well, but, uh, is that something that may possibly happen?
It is, it is under consideration, I know it is part of, uh, the legislative agenda for, uh, CCM, uh. As to, to shorten that window, and one of the reasons is not as many communities saw the, the type of volume that we did, so there's a push. Across the state to reduce it because in some instances they were at fifteen, twenty, twenty-five percent, uh, utilization. So they figured they can compress the window.
I think also because the absentee, the no.
No excuse absentee.
No excuse ballot, yes.
Right, that absentee ballot. Patient is that more people might use that, which will also lessen the amount of people that are coming in.
Alright, maybe you will see this come down a little bit.
But correct me if I'm wrong, the budget is based on how we did it this year, right, so. It's, 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 it's at the max, and if it's less, then we'll hopefully just see some savings in the budget next year.
I think it would be interesting to see, you probably have it, uh, the, kind of the roll-up of that ninety-four thousand dollar request, or, like you said, fourteen days, how many people?
Is, well, is it not on board back, because I think I had given it to Tracy to.
Unless it's someplace unexpected, it's not, there's only the one document.
Okay, good, the sheet. Yeah, I, I, I apologize, I gave it to Tracy late yesterday, so I, she probably didn't get it up.
Yeah, that would be, that would be great to see, I, I, I agree, um, because it is a big jump, we just need to, I mean, I'm sure it's justifiable, but we need to understand it.
Yeah, Tracy put it up this morning, if you refresh, you probably will get it.
Unless, I mean, sometimes they don't pop up where you expect them to be.
Once, once again, part, part of that jump is based on the fact it was a voting grant that was given for early voting from the state at ten thousand five hundred. Which offset some of last year's, this past year's, uh, numbers, so that's not anticipated for this year. It may happen, but we don't have any indication that we're gonna see the same thing, so that, that's an immediate ten thousand five hundred jump, and then on top of that's the.
There, there is a grant, but it's much smaller.
Is there, okay.
Um, we will have, um, some effect from the, uh, no excuse absentees. But that would be on election day because the registrar's office is responsible for counting those and running them through. So we would then need a bigger staff then, that's not comparable to all the early voting, but it, it, that's on our side. Um, but on the, I'm on the legislative committee with, um, the registrars. And they're working on, um, appealing for a myriad of changes to early voting, some is wanting. It to be shorter, I don't know what the outcome will be, but some are, would be moving it back a little to allow us. The registrar can more days to prepare for the election, there's, there are, uh, a bunch of things that we're talking about. I don't know how, how that will go, we'll, we'll have to see, but we're, it's, we're actively debating that now.
Trying to refreshing and seeing, I, I, I had given it to Tracy in an Excel format and she needed a PDF, so that was my fault.
Oh, okay.
So, but she was putting it on now, okay.
So, like, wasn't there?
So we actually did cut the, um, amount of, as much as it looks high, the sound of early voting. Payroll looks high, we actually did cut down the number of workers that we have for this coming year. Because when you see it in the early voting section, the cost of payroll. It includes early voting, but also same-day registration, um, so we, we did cut down less people, if I. Put the two figures together, it's what we used for early voting, um, you have to have. Um, people at each station, just like at the polls, you, you have to have a process of how they walk through the room, so what we did was. Knowing that this election wouldn't be as, it was presidential, where ha- where we had four people sitting in a row to check people in. We cut down to two, but we still need all the other stations there, so it didn't, it, it doesn't really affect it that much. So, and then it will get cut down more if they lessen the days, but I don't, I don't know that that would happen fast enough for this year.
It would not surprise me to see legislation that.
Especially for primaries, referendums.
And, and as far as the primaries go, we budget for two, we hope we only have one or less, but, like Gloria said, but. Um, but we, we've been advised by Mary Jane to always budget for two, just in case there are two. Last year, there were two, right? There were two?
Oh, presidential and, yeah, yeah.
But that's it, I mean, the biggest difference is in the payroll, as Gloria said, and then the other thing is that we, they've been. We're supposed to get new ballot machine, thank you, we're supposed to get new ballot machines. We think the cost is, the, the state will cover the machines, but they haven't said whether the cost, cover maintenance. We have no, I, like Gloria said, we, the new machines may or may not fit in those big blue bins, that means we would need. At five, six, seven more blue bins, that could be a big expense, but we have no idea. So we're mentioning it.
So I told them to discuss it with you so that you knew that the potential of all of this is coming forward, but they don't really know.
So you didn't budget for the extra bins?
We put in two thousand extra dollars. If they turn out to be seven hundred dollars each, that's, you need.
No idea, um, and we, the new tabulators are coming out this year. Now, and we, they have asked, you know, by email, when is the first time you need it, so we replied. In April, so, if you.
Want to be the first?
Have no choice.
They tested, a few towns tested them, believe it or not, during the presidential.
What was this called about, the issues were?
Yeah, I think it was something like the paper, oh, I, I know, the paper was, it doesn't, uh, you won't, we won't have the pink. For this and yellow for that because these new tabulators do not accept color.
Do you know what she's referring to?
So, you know, it'll be a little code somewhere that, uh.
So the, the ones that we're going to receive are, are in use in other towns at the moment?
They, it was a, you know, I think it was nine towns that used them.
So you can ask them for the dimensions of these machines, so you can answer your question about.
I don't know what they have, that's interesting.
They, they did and they said it was larger, but they, and I, I remember them saying they, it was larger, but they didn't.
No, it's gonna.
Store them or whatever, I, I don't know what they do, we, we store them at all the polling places. And, uh, the other thing, oh, we're getting a new CVR, uh, system, that's what they said last year, but now they said they're. You know, just this morning, um, Facebook was, they're working on it, so, um, you know, let's see if that comes in by. These, uh, town referendum.
Anything further?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Gavin, that's what we.
No real big.
No real big. Changes in the budgets from what you've seen over the past many years. The uh. Couple slight increases in here um as a. Roll through the. Sheet here, I have my own separate sheet, which might be a little different than what you have printed out here on my. Explanation here, um my salary is full time, um don't change because it's up to negotiations. Right now, um Boarding Commission Secretary salaries uh slightly increased. Um the number I put here is slightly different than on the spreadsheet there. Um I put in to raise it up to thirty-three thousand dollars since there was a five hundred dollar negative um. Last year in the budget item there, we kind of went over. Um so I looked at increasing about seven sixty in the um um part-time salary range there.
Yeah, they worked that out with Mitch.
So Ken, was that one one particular order commission, was that?
I did research to see where that power, where that.
You know, we'll talk about that.
One came in there, but we I was, I was in the negative of five hundred and ten dollars or something last year in that line item, so I. Um decided to push that up a little bit to make it true. Natural resources over time, that's like that's all negotiates, that doesn't change, that's for. Um coverage of my ministry assistant for covering uh evening meetings, the honor. Regular thirty-five hour work week there. Uh travel expenses, a hundred dollars, that pretty much covers parking fees and stuff like that, if I have to go into the. Cities or other areas where there's a parking meters and stuff there. Information systems, um that went up two thousand dollars from. Last year's budget, the increase comes out of the parcel plan manager, planometric updates. Um area there, um trying to get a um. More of a quarterly or three times a year update in that process. Will increase in the fee of that, um it's hardly used throughout the office and the public. This G I S system there. Advertising public notice, that didn't change, any uh contracted services, I still say is the same, that's for the fee for. Um consulting to help with monitoring the corner park and also includes. Um testing of the the lake in terms of the health, water quality, clarity, um stormwater impacts. Uh through the um drainage system into the lake there, office supplies hasn't changed. Covers different department, there are commissions within that one there, tree model budget um left the same as. Last year, so there's no increase with that, um last year we pretty much kept uh stayed within their met the budget there, public works. Um does a good job with their truck, um doing elevating branches and stuff on the side of the road and minor smaller tree removals, but. Um the larger trees we have along the roadway and closer to the wires, um stuff that they can't handle. Um but I think we have a pretty good.
This is the first time you have been asked for an increase.
I believe.
It's the first time I have an actual new trees there.
He's in third place at the moment.
It's very tight. A whole queen for the day, uh sob story about the queen and trees and you know, so.
Um trying to, we'll see what happens, I mean, as I said, did we always have an issue, I mean, right now, our big problem, we've been having issues with ash trees with our last one, that's kind of. Um ran itself through, the one we're watching now. Are the beach trees with the beach leaf disease there, um we actually have more beach trees along the side of the road than we do with the ash trees, so. Um monitoring the health with those and seeing what's happening with this whole disease cycle with the um beach trees, um so. Who knows in the future that could go up, but we're except the monitoring of the, our right now, our latest. Problem with bug infestation or anything else is the the beach trees. Uh publication dues subscriptions, that hasn't changed and education training hasn't changed, that's course my training. Deputy tree wardens uh and commission trainings um are all included that, that includes. Conservation patient, wireless commission, I commission, all um included in the education. Vehicle maintenance, um got that the same that covers my my current Ford Ranger pickup truck, which is, I'm looking at. Shopping around for replacement of that. Uh the three fifty pickup truck I have and the maintenance of our small tractor are included in that. That's the maintenance and repair and upkeep and also the fuel charges um for operation of this vehicle. Both the stewardship also uh remains staying uh five thousand dollars. Um so I think the kids, uh my budget pretty much went up projected of about. Two thousand seven hundred sixty dollars is my increase outside of salaries.
So you're not asking for a new vehicle in this budget?
No, 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 I have the blood vehicle, it's just currently reflecting my existing vehicle, which hopefully should be. Changed as I my cake gets clearer, figuring out what I'm shopping for. Think I have a couple of things narrowed down right now, that public works go away, um see what's out there.
Always next year's capital. Uh Kevin, just a quick, took a look at uh your your tree rule budget, um and through November, you've expended about thirty-five thousand. When when is the season that you normally?
I usually get busy or at this time of year and sometimes, like I said, sometimes I get caught up in other things, I'm not as active into it with. Balls, uh some juggling different things there, but usually I try to take advantage during this winter period of time, um actually get better racing.
Think so, it's a little easier to take trees down.
Well, the the other part is that the contractors, especially if it was winter, they can't get people backyards and stuff like that, so looking for. Work from roadways, driveways, et cetera, so there's um winter discounts sometimes given for. Tree work during this period of time.
I was curious about a couple of things, um was curious, how are we doing cleaning up the invasive species in Lake Quanapaw? Is that gonna come to a close, do we think we need it?
That is a continuous object, like any weed removal on your garden, stuff like that, um we. Uh I just got a report from the uh. Act station there, which does our, you know, surveys of it, um they're starting to see some improvements in the um the health of lake and. The weeds, especially with the the change. Uh herbicide we're using in there, fluoride there, um it's made a difference in there. Uh but we're hoping to get a point where the cost could go down, but we're still gonna go into a maintenance thing where there's gonna be. Pop up stuff in there, it's a lake which is utilized by, it's not isolated lake where it's just the users on the lake, it's a lake where. People tr- are trailered in there and bases are caught in the motor and. Forces their boat then fall off and attach and start growing in the lake there. Uh there's some new stuff out there which we're watching and hoping doesn't end up in our lake, uh which is some really. Nasty stuff compared to what we have in there right now, um unfortunately, the state doesn't like other states in New England and across the country. Um have lake monitors, I the the um boat ramps to inspect boats, we don't have like. Putting up hosing down of um boats going in, which I see it in Maine from my New York State. Um to protect these lakes there, um we're connected somehow it's behind the times, I mean. State budgets are tight like we are and stuff like that, so it's all affecting down to the local level here.
And our consultant uh was watching the lake, what what's he gonna do, is he related to the treatments or is he doing some other thing?
He helps us with planning the the um the treatments, helps with preventing things he does. Uh the big thing we have in there is like quality heat, they go out there and actually do water quality monitoring. Of different parameters in the lake, um clarity of the lake, the diversity of the lake. Check um testing for algae levels. Couple other, right down the list of parameters I have there, but they have parameters that they have looking for, and they also do um as to look at. Um stormwater discharge is from our piping uh into the lake there to see if there's any impact from that and and kind of also kind of. Define something, um start looking at a chase down of where that component may be coming into our. Our our lake system there, there's a catch basin system, which are some property upstream from there, which. Is storing something which may be af- affecting a a lake level or concentration there, so.
And then is he on like permanently, or we just have him on year by year?
He's currently contracted until December of twenty-five, I think we have him.
If we're getting the state to help paying for any of that.
We we do have, we do actually do have a grant, we actually go after a grant, we've been lucky in the past couple of years of getting. Whenever you see is probably half the number, but we're actually been getting fifty percent reimbursement from the state. Through their.
Great.
Um grant program there, so and we also get another three thousand from children.
Is that for the consultant or for the treatments?
The treatment of the lake, which is in the capital budget site.
Was twenty-five K and three K?
The uh.
It's the grants.
Oh, so this is not of the grant.
The contracted services not from the grant there, that's just.
That that's in capital. The um.
Oh, gotcha.
The grant you would see in capital, not here.
Yeah. That's part of, like I said, partially by the state grant, I we put in for that um. January, December, there's actually the beginning of December, I had two grants running one after the other, um so beginning of December, we had. Uh we put in for the um the harbor side treatment. invasive treatment in the lake there, so that's being reviewed, hopefully we come out positive, okay?
All right, anything further? No, you're not, Kevin, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um I know that everyone is, we're running significantly behind, uh I apologize for that, but these conversations are valuable. Uh with that, uh how about five minutes for bio break for? We're back live and we have building, good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Hey, Matt, I can't hear you.
Hello? Who's got me now?
Mike, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can. Yeah, I'm good.
Can you Lou, can you hear us yet?
Mike, are you hearing it? Okay, good to go, sorry, thank you.
All right.
No problem. Hello, everyone, I'm Kimberly Nora Rose, damn, I'm a building official. And I'm here to discuss my budget and some of the increases uh that are in my line items. Uh one of the increases is for part-time salaries, I currently have uh three of them. That I am asking for an increase, two of them have been working me for the building department for five years, the other one's been with us for two years. So and the one who has been with us for two years, I was also asking for him to have an extra day. Of work, um one of the reasons why is because of inspections have went up almost two hundred increase of. Um inspection calls and there is also proposal for the state that if. A municipality is not able to do an inspection within ten days, the contractor or applicant is able to hire their own inspection. And that person can charge up to four hundred to a thousand dollars a day for that. So I usually when we're quite busy, which we started, um right now, we're doing a little bit of slow time. But usually we start back busy middle of February, all the way down to December, and we're usually a week and a half out. For inspection and so we're getting close and I don't want us to have that type of penalty.
Who's gonna recharge this four hundred?
Uh they would charge it to the town. That's what the proposal was.
Because we didn't meet our timeframe.
That is correct.
Is that enforced now?
Uh there's a proposal that's on the bill for the state.
Contractor would hire their own inspector and that inspector would build the town.
That is correct.
I have a suspicion the bill will get written a little bit differently, that there may be certified inspectors.
It has to be a certified building official, but it can be just any inspector, you have to be state like, so with the state of Connecticut. But at the end of the day, they could hire that person, that person can charge for anyways from four hundred to a thousand dollars for that inspection.
And there would be independent contract.
Should definitely, that's correct.
So you're gonna hire these guys before they go into business?
Sounds like you're gonna lose all your inspectors.
You can rest assured, CCM will have uh an advocacy position on this bill.
It should be, I mean, more than ten days is not really doing a service to people, so you're within that now, but.
Right. But but you know, I'm quite lucky with the my part um part inspector, part time inspector that are. Working with us in the building department because there are so many municipalities that are shorthanded and they don't have anyone. Uh whatsoever, so I'm quite lucky for the people that I do have or relationship with that are working with here. Because they have approached many times.
It's it's statewide shortage. May I ask just a quick question for anybody who's listening, what what triggers an inspection, what level of work? Where do you start from and where do you end at? Most people think it's, most people think it's when you build a house, but it's not, you know, the two hundred, the the value you're talking about. It's somebody adding a deck, getting a room, what are they, what 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 things you have to go out and inspect?
Anything for a new construction or renovation is what we go out for. Um so if they have to take out a permit for us legally go out there to that property, and so anything we can go out there for, we can go out there from foundation. All the way up from framing to roofing, we will go out there for, we can go out there just for electrical, for plumbing. It depends on the work that they're actually doing that needs to be permitted, but the state actually has guidelines on what is considered a permissible work.
And the bulk of your activity is centered around which?
Uh new construction, new construction, commercial, uh interior renovations, fit outs. So that is quite a bit of our work that we're doing.
I think a couple of years ago, they had asked him to detail the changes in the building code requirements relative to inspections. And the number of inspections on a single permit, single permit, it's expanded.
That is correct.
By a multiple of.
Right, it went up around, I wanna say, two. Two code cycles ago, which was around the twenty eighteen um seventeen, eighteen code. It went up at least from a regular new home construction, let's say, went from eight to nine inspections to thirteen plus, so.
Every month for finance, we get a report that talks about the number of permits and it's three dozen a year. So I presume that's that's complete new homes.
Correct.
Those are completely, those are new single.
Single family homes.
Just just to clarify.
Right. So, so that is for that, and um my other line items that I have an increase for is, uh one is for uniforms. Uh for us for identification for when my inspectors are out there uh doing inspections, which is also co-compliant that we have to have. And also for permits, subscriptions and education, um we. Are going through an intensive regarding the code is minimal of what we need to enforce that the state has, but. They have enacted quite a bit of new educational courses that we have to take and new regulations and codes. And one of them that also has been proposed is that they want us to do housing now. Um that's on the ballot, it hasn't been approved, but then we're gonna have to end up also doing interior housing inspections. That's one of the things that they're want us to get back, which is a whole new other education that we're gonna have to do, we're sizing the construction part.
Questions? Above what we have.
Okay, but uh sorry.
You know, I was just curious what you meant by uniforms or code code compliance? Is that? The state's code?
State code, we are state code.
Oh, so the state requires you to go in uniform?
We have to have something stating that we are with the town of Guilford or whatever municipality you're working for.
It has to be visible when they approach the property.
That is correct.
So people don't think you're just wandering. Yeah, some people don't take kindly to that.
Something like your badge that you're wearing today.
And that is correct, yes, with also my inspectors have badges too, all uh state um workers, actually. State code compliance regarding health, building, fireplace, we're all law enforcement agents and we all have badges.
Anything else?
I will men, I would like to mention a couple of things. Uh I, since I was here kind of early, I noticed, I heard that uh Janice wanted uh it's gonna elevate one uh.
Right.
Um Adam, which I think is fantastic. um, Adam, which I think is fantastic, but I do also put me also in a perplexed a bit of we're building because we're quite busy. And usually the admin position for engineering has always, at least ninety percent of it, has worked for building. So if that position is going away, that means I'm already gonna be short another person helping out for building. Um, it's, I think it'd be best since, you know, that building really needs two admins, to be honest, because we have been short-staffed many times, and we are, I'm grateful for the other departments that's able to lend hands on um you know, inland and wetlands, zoning, and even help to help out with building regarding the amount of work that we're getting. But it really does require for a two-person job regarding an admin. Um, because of the amount of work and, you know, and as we getting bus- bus- more busier, especially with zoning, with the more of the permits and also with health department, it it's really puts a strain on others, and I really do feel bad regarding the whole situation. I just wanted to make a note of that.
Okay, thank you. That's something that uh we'll, we'll work with. I think it's, it's an issue that impacts all the departments over there, and I know we're gonna hear another proposal or shared resource. Um, the question here is how do we do that collectively so it satisfies everybody's uh the needs and desires, or not desires, but needs predominantly? Um, but I, I, I do, uh, I I know it's not gonna provide immediate relief, but we are still holding out hope that uh the uh intergo, the online permitting system, will yield some efficiencies uh and some potential uh ease of uh labor demands uh just in terms of handling pieces of paper and handling people coming in the door. Um, that was, that was, you know, efficiency was one of the drivers to move to that kind of system, so I think we have to look at that a little holistically, and we've got short time to do it, but we'll, we'll be talking about.
I I actually did do a survey, just wanted to let you know, because I thought that would probably be brought up here. Um, I contacted uh my email list of building officials throughout Connecticut regarding who are online and how long they've been online, and have they had to release um some of their personnel or hire? And the majority of them had to hire people, so I just.
That could be a combination of things.
Yeah, but, but none of it, none of them ever had to release. They said it was at least more. They said it's just another avenue of people to apply. It wasn't actually something that anyway alleviate any type of work.
Is anyone else full-time in your department?
Um, myself, I have a permit tag. Uh, Samarah, she is also full-time. Um, I currently do not have an admin. My other admin has had.
Did I just hear you correctly that you contacted the other builder officials in the state regarding doing that, the application process, and none of them found a savings or efficiency that it just simply, I mean, it's like stores being open on Sunday now, it's the same amount of business spread over seven days.
No, the ones, I got a more response from majority of them, and majority of them all said no. They either had to hire personnel, they kept the same amount. It's just another avenue of people able to apply, but it did not alleviate any type of position.
Doing is making it easier for people to just do stuff whenever they want. It's not really.
It, it remains to be seen. There are, they're, they're conflicting, they're conflicting opinions on that, and, you know, of course, you know, the, the sales literature will tell you that you've got to ease your, ease your burden, and that's why, that's why these systems wind up getting implemented, efficient, the efficiency and ease of use for the applicants. Uh, so.
Man, I can appreciate the transition time. It's gonna, you know, it's gonna be a learning experience, but I, I just, you know, like I said, related to the open on Sundays for retail, just didn't add it to their sales.
Spread it, spread it across.
Such a small staff, too. The efficiency would have to be so huge to justify getting rid of, you know, one hundred people, whatever. So it's just not.
Uh, and if there's any questions regarding intergov and. Um, are you done? Okay, I'm done. Yep.
Ask Kim to stay so we can talk a little bit more about this.
I just want to, Jonathan, on board fact, at the very top of the agenda is something called salaries. And if you, you can use that to look at every single employee.
Oh, okay.
So I.
I haven't viewed that yet.
Right, so you would be able to see.
Okay, what's the department structure?
So I'm, not that you can't ask the questions, but you do have the data as well, so when you go home, you're gonna see it. No, that's okay. I I'm not trying to tell you can't ask the question, just that.
Speaking, speaking of that, the salaries, and, and your, your salaries are incorrect because it should be zero and the, and the full-time salaries. Uh, so one point four percent is my error.
I figured that was incorrect.
My error. We'll get that fixed.
Fix that, okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just want to go over, um, before I get into the numbers, a couple major changes that have happened in planning and zoning and and our town hall south, um, just to kind of set the table for what we're asking for. Um, we, my department, as we have finally um staffed up, um, we have finally implemented to the full extent necessary, the new zoning regulations. And um, as you may recall, one of the implications of that is that for every building permit that is issued, a precursor to every building permit is a zoning permit. Um, we just implemented in September that change administratively. Um, and my preliminary numbers for the first six months of the year is that we have issued four times as many permits in the last six months than we did the entire time last year. So, um, the administrative burden on staff is, is immense. I'm spending an inordinate inordinate amount of time myself reviewing permits and answering questions. Um, and so I, I foresee that trend of um permits taking up most of our, our staff time continuing. The second issue that we've all been talking about this morning is this implementation of intergov. Um, we, I was the straggler in terms of implementation because just didn't have staff to be able to build out our systems. We've done a very rough and ready build out for planning and zoning. Um, I anticipate that that system that we've built out very preliminarily will need um, a substantial amount of additional tweaks as we come online and, and figure out what our problems are. Um, within the office, the two-point people for the intergov implementation have been Kim and Darka. Um, Darka is an admin to the health department now. Um, and so part of what we've been discussing interdepartmentally is um we're gonna need somebody who's can help us in the office on the fly as we go live in February to help us uh change permits, change processes, dial it in, so to speak, and Darka seems to be the person who knows the system the um best. Um, she's been working with Kim for the past
Three and a half.
Three and a half years um to do so, and she's the one we go to when we have questions. What this does, though, is it creates pressure on her and her job um, because she's essentially acting in a capacity as an office manager now. Um, and so what we are very quickly trying to do is to, like the IT position, elevate her position um in a very quick way um into an office manager position so that we can eliminate the need to having, to hire um, the munis folks at two hundred twenty-five dollars an hour to help us with this rollout. So that's the first thing I wanted to talk about. The second thing that's related to that is that um Sonya and I are requesting a joint new permit um position of a permit tax to some, partially to backfill this off minute, office manager position in health, but also to give my department twenty hours of an additional permit processing person to take essentially administrative tasks off my plate so that I can actually do planning projects. Right now, I'm not able to, to write grants, do the RFPs for all the great wonderful planning things we want to do. Um, and this, I think, would alleviate some of that. Now, all of this is said in the context that we don't really know how efficient intergov is going to make us or not make us. Um, we just know that we are anticipating a lot of change happening, a lot of questions, and we feel like all of these things need to be considered together. I don't know if you want to add anything.
That is correct. And uh, like I, like Anne was mentioning, myself and Darka have been pretty much the focal point regarding intergov. So Darka is extremely well-versed, and it, and she knows how to actually uh change a good portion of it if there is something that needs to be administered immediately instead of actually calling Tyler, which is going to be quite costly at two twenty-five an hour. So this is one of the things that we thought about that would be a lot easier and better flow to have a complete point person to actually handle that.
Thank you. This uh role that Darka is filling is not new uh in terms of uh a recommendation. Several years ago, we had a, we had efficiency study, evaluation done by our auditor at the time, who had recommended uh a, 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 a structure in that building because of the commonality of them working and how much work they do together uh for, well, there are two things. One was for a uh, a, a lead department head who uh had management responsibilities over all the other departments. Um, we were never able to pull that one off. The other was a recommendation to go to a lead or a uh head clerk or headed admin, a chief of admin, uh, who would have responsibilities for doing day-to-day things, uh, but also have sort of was an ombudsman for the, for the office and had responsibility for the, uh, for the admin positions, uh, whether dotted line or, or horse string. Uh, so this, this role that uh is being posed uh for Darka uh is one that is consistent with something we've talked about in the past. Uh, and I think that is also been agreed to by some of the department heads uh relative to uh that kind of structure, so. Uh, it's gonna require a little bit of work on our part um to, to pull it together. And these conversations have just been started over the last four, three, four weeks, so there's a lot to flesh out. Um, and this may require a leap of faith. Uh, but again, the timing is, is challenging because we are moving into a, into a world, a new world, electronic world on this, on this process. And despite what Ken has said, you know, there were always hopes that we're gonna find some kind of efficiency. But the last thing I will say is Jonathan will know this, typically in an IT shop, uh, information technology shop, you have uh, you have a, a variety of types of roles, and one of them is software, software support. Um, we, you know, we, we have two belt and suspenders technicians, they're network folks, they're the hardware guys, they're not applications people. So in effect, Darka is fulfilling sort of a role of an application specialist, uh, and uh it, but that's only a portion of her role.
Right.
She still will be in the health department, still responsible for that, but also have this uh ombudsman's role uh over anyone else. Now, that's gonna, that's gonna take a little bit of work and negotiate, so that the positions may not necessarily specifically be uh identified at this point, but I think we need to put some buckets in there for, for that kind of capacity.
Now, we've got, we have a lot of moving parts here. Um, when the budget was put together, we did not have these, these positions in the budget you have right now. Uh, as I've said before, we're in discussions with GEA about the whole, the whole contract. Uh, but I do not have an office manager in, in the proposal. I do not have a new position permit technician. I think we're challenged as to where that person's gonna sit, since we couldn't, we barely shoehorned in the last person we hired into town hall south. Uh, we have no job descriptions, uh, so we have ways to go before we can do this. Uh, I need some direction from this group as to whether these new, and, and then Kim mentioned a second admin. That's not in her budget either. We haven't heard.
I didn't know about the other position.
We have, we haven't heard from uh, from, from health yet. I don't know what else, what else to hear here this morning, so. Um, you know, all this being said, I think we've got a lot of work to do, as you say, but a lot of this was not, you know, prepared for this budget. It was been discussed informally.
It's an evolving process. And I've had individual conversations with everyone. I said, we may not be able to get where we want to get to, but we're gonna we need to put it on the table because it's a need that needs to be addressed.
Yeah, and I advised the group um to, to just have this discussion with you. Um, so.
Just a couple of points that you brought up. Aside from the intergov, less work, more work. You started to say with the new zoning code or with regulations from the state, if I come in and want to get a permit on something, I now may have to three, fill out three permits where I, or apply for three permits where I might have only had to apply for one prior to that?
Um, previous to the new zoning regulations being adopted, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, you didn't have to have a zoning permit as a precursor to every building permit. There were certain permits you could get from the building department without coming through zoning first. That doesn't mean that zoning wasn't looking at them, because that is a requirement of state statute. But the new zoning regulations codify the fact that before you can pull, even consider pulling a building permit, you have to come to us separately for a zoning permit first, and then when you go for your building permit, you give building department your zoning permit as proof that you've had your full zoning review.
So even if we didn't have any increase in peak, in building, we're gonna have an increase in permit work? So twenty people did it in twenty-four and twenty people do it in twenty-five, the work has doubled or, or maybe not doubled, but.
It's a different level of review and a, a, a more intense administration of the zoning regulations. I guess I would say it's not double the work, but there are more steps in the process, more true powers, more eyeballs and more time.
I, I, I got a, we keep talking about this. The town isn't growing in population, but somehow government is growing, and it's clear for everybody to come in and every department to come in and point. If you're asking for more, point to the source of the issue. It's not, you know, it's because it's being imposed upon you.
Yeah, we're not making.
Rather than, rather than you want more toys and.
Right, right.
You want more people around you to have fun. This, this is, this is, this is in a position of unfunded man being.
Yes.
Exactly. And, and it's also reflective of the fact that we've done a pretty good job over the years of keeping staff at a level uh that was probably not sustainable a few years ago, and quite honestly, no offense to my, to the team, but most of the complaints that I get coming into the selectmen's office has to do with the permitting process and the delays the issues around permitting and I had someone uh at four thirty-five in the office on Friday pretty much screaming at me after he had that individual had been over at town hall south about the process, right, uh, that he didn't like. Turned out, turned out his contractor screwed something up and never submitted the permit that he told his, his uh, his client that he had filed, but that's where most, that's where most of the challenges come from, uh, in terms of costs.
So those changes to the zoning relation, uh, regulations, those were imposed on us?
Well, the planning and zoning commission adopted a brand-new set of regulations, so we imposed it upon ourselves, I guess, would be the correct statement.
That would be my philosophy as well.
Without funding additional staff to take care of it.
But some of the changes were, we didn't just do it to create more work and collect more money. There were reasons behind these things, right?
Yeah.
And one of the reasons behind it was people walked in, got a building permit, and thought they were good to go.
Right.
But the step was taking place. There was a review.
In the background.
In the background check, not a permit. So that's why the permit, uh, the permit for zoning was put into place was so that the process started where it could be stopped at any point down the road. So when people walked in, yeah, I got a building permit, or I got a health permit, all right? Oh, wait, you gotta go to zoning to figure out if you're allowed to do that work without going to uh planning and zoning or to zoning board appeals.
Right.
So that, that was a pretty logical rationale for, for moving the process, because people now understand, step one is planning. That, you know, once you enter that, Earl, you're good to go. So, which was never the case.
Right.
So are we still doing the work behind the scenes even though they didn't apply for the?
No, we were doing a review.
People were jumping, jumping the line, so to speak, and we'd catch it later and be like, uh, these guys really needed variance, and they're halfway through construction. That's a problem. Yeah.
One of the reasons why is because once they applied for a building application, they ought, and they pay for it, they believe they're good to go, and they start before the approval ever happens. And while it's still under review by the other departments, because before I can even look at it, all the other departments have to approve it first. So while it's still being reviewed by the other departments, they're already going because they believe, I already applied for it and I paid for it, so I'm good to go. And by the time they're like, oh, no, you got denied because of this, you gotta get a variance, you gotta get this. they're like, oh no, you got denied because of this, you gotta get a variance, you gotta get this. They're like, well, I already started because I thought once I paid for it, I had a permit, which they did not. So that's one of the reasons. To help simplify it for them to understand.
Just curious, if you pulled the, I don't even know if you had to pull a permit for furnace, but if you pulled a permit for furnace, you'd have to go through the zoning?
Yeah.
Although we have just modified that process.
The fee structure.
The fee structure, the fee structure that goes along with it. Um and in some it's, it's a state fee.
It's just a pass, we don't make it pay.
We don't make the.
It needs to be pointed out to people. I don't know, I would educate the public.
Yeah. Sorry. Okay, that's okay. Um on to my budget.
Sorry.
Um so the budget doesn't change that much. I moved some line items around to um right-size them. As you know, last year was my first budget cycle and I was only about four months in when I made that first budget. So the numbers, um the some line items change, it's really just a reshuffling of um the realities of things. So um I'll let Mitch update the salaries um once we know what those numbers are. Um expenses and travel and education and training, I had put, we don't have the the fine line item detail here, but last year I put more into those all go together because the education and training requires expenses and travels. This is just a right sizing of the individual components within those two um line items with a new uncertified CEO on staff. I put in some money for some additional training for her um to meet state statute dance hall, so um continue her training. As we go on, um advertising and public notice, we um the Planning and Zoning Commission is meeting half as much as it did previously. And I looked back at the last year of invoices from our required public noticing, right-size that number. The uniform and clothing allowance stays the same. Office supplies are going down because I had last year asked for filing cabinets, which I still need to go purchase. And next year, I'm um asking for a few more filing cabinets. This would be three more. Um and that should take care of what we need for now, but it's less money. And then permits dues and subscriptions, those are all going up based on the research I've done and what those will cost us. Slight increase on those. Education and training, as I said, goes down a little bit because I um moved some line items to expenses and travel. And then vehicle maintenance stays the same. So the the big delta we're asking for, which is not captured here, is is this shared permit tech position between health department and planning and zoning so that we have additional staff to help us process permits and also help free up my time so that I can work on the larger planning projects that we have anticipated.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. No, go ahead. We're on to something else.
Thank you, Anne.
We're on to the next one.
Owing to uh people's schedules, uh the the those schedules are not town employees, so we're gonna have the historic district commission up the line. And Anne and Bernie. And thank you for being patient.
Oh, that's okay. Uh for those of you who don't know me, I'm Anne Street. I am currently the chair of the Historic District Commission and we are here with our budget. Essentially the same as we have previously done. Um our our wages, which are the biggest part of our budget, are controlled by town. And uh that is what it is. That's the only real increase of purchasing items. That's our um printing legal notices mainly, and those, it's difficult to determine how how much that's going to cost because it's based on our applications. If we get an application that's as simple as, I want to put in a fence, that's a pretty simple legal notice. If we get a legal notice that's got lots and lots of, I want to do this or maybe that, and then we're going to add this, then it's a longer legal notice. And so that turns out to be what it is. Um we are right smack dab in the middle of our um application numbers. Um in the last thirty years, we have traditionally run from between twenty and twenty-five applications a year. We did twenty-three last year. I think it's pretty fair to place our um budget for the coming year on what we did last year and um go from there.
Questions?
Makes sense to me.
Pretty straight. Could have done this line as well.
Well.
But thank you for coming in. Uh anybody online, any questions for comment? Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you. Hi.
Thank you. Health Department, Sonya. I like the way I thought you worked out. Anne gets to take the heat on the new position.
My name's Sonya Marino, uh Sonya Brinkworth, actually, sorry.
Yes.
That's right. Also, I got me back, Sonya Brinkworth. Um I'm your health director. And of course, the first thing I'm going to talk about is what Kim and Anne uh kind of set me up for. Alright, technically speaking, I'm set. I've got Darka, right? But that wouldn't be right. Uh she already is doing a lot of the work and the funding that we've used for overtime has been grants. Those grants are passing out. I mean, we're not going to get as much as, nor can I go out and get them if I have more work on the health department. Darka is very good at intergov. She knows how to go on there. Right now, we pay two twenty-five an hour for each department to get those questions answered. Having one person to streamline that and educate the other administrative staff for a more unified approach to our contractors or builders and our residents, just seems like it's a really good idea. So that's my whole darker thing, okay? As far as the rest of my budget, it's pretty simple. I didn't go up much because I knew this was going to be a question about the whole dark and permit tech thing. So my actual operating budget didn't go up a lot. The one thing I do want to talk about, though, is that at last year, I did have a grant person to help and that was set off by Grant Cost. This year, I took it out. It just, it's too difficult to have somebody here. We don't have a spacing and it's difficult to do programs. What we did last year, which was paid for through a grant, was to use a VNA and the Yale Health Services to come in and provide public health prevention programs. We did Dodge Diabetes Program. It went phenomenal. We still are meeting to this day, even though it ended a long time ago. This year, we also have money to do another grant where we're going to be doing Dodge Diabetes again, as well as more wellness and Ask a Nurse Clinic. Those will be provided by the grant. Next year, as I said, our grants fund is starting to dry up. We do have, I put the seven thousand dollars, which you'll see the increase in education that is actually from a grant. So it's not really an increase from municipal, it's from the grant so that we can try to have another program next fiscal year. Um I increased, let's see here, three hundred dollars for uniform and clothing allowance because we do have another person who's in the field. Uh that is Huda. She's a WPCA coordinator and she is, that's three hundred dollars by union contract. Um and I described the seven thousand. And we also now have two, almost three vehicles, so I just increased the actual vehicle maintenance by a thousand dollars. That's it.
Could could we walk through the educational training again?
Sure.
Not sure I caught that. You say there is grant funding?
So yes, yes, there is. There, but that will be the last year we can use it.
So there will be an offset?
Right, so so in twenty-six, we're still getting the grant.
It's a grant that goes through to twenty-six, yes.
Okay, so we don't need to add it to this.
Correct. I wasn't sure how to put that in.
Right. So if it goes through twenty, so we should see this increase when, a year from now, when we're doing twenty-seven.
So that's a seventy-seven hundred dollar increase they saw.
Yep, so, yeah.
So that's not going to happen this year?
Right.
Well, it's going to happen, but it's going to be.
We we will review that and and come back with adjustments if needed.
Why is the grant drying up?
I have to apply for more grants, but right now we have only two grants that we're dealing with, the vaccine hesitancy and public health workforce development grant. Um I would have to apply for more grants.
Okay, so technically, there might be a new grant down the line, but you, but then you pointed out, then you have to have the time to apply with the grant. But but the grants might still be out there, just not this one.
Correct, and there could be a range of block health preventative grant. I mean, any of them, DPH, I will absolutely go for. Yeah.
And I think what's important, we uh Sonya quickly ran through what those programs were. Um those are community health initiatives, which is a key component of the health department, which they very rarely get to unless you're working in a municipality and you have division of labor where they actually do these things like, you know, asthma programs in urban areas and things like that. So uh this is, this is public health at its core, right? This is why you got into this business originally. Uh it was not just an expect-septum system. It was, it was to develop community health programs. So uh I applaud you for doing that. Uh and so the, and it's good news is that we do have a grant for it, so that that increase. So the increase is largely going to be uh on the wage side. So.
Couple of things. Um first of all, if Darka gets uh upgraded to an office manager, what do you do for administrative assistance?
So like I said, right now, we're using the money right now for the overtime from the grants. There is going to be a need and I think there's a little bit of permit tech. We'd have to have a discussion.
Well, Kim, that and that will also provide you, you mentioned the work you need. Um second of all.
The forty-two five that you should have in here for the increase in full-time salaries, does that include the permit tech? Is that the permit?
No, that does not.
That was my second question. I don't know where the the forty-two five, well, that question I wanted to clarify, the forty-two five that she has in the increase in the full-time salaries is because she no longer has ARPA grant for twenty-two thousand, two seventy-three, seventy-five. She no longer has an ELC grant of twenty thousand, three oh six. Salaries are actually flat. It's the ARPA grants that we lost, not, the ARPA and the ELC grant that we lost that is causing the increase in the full-time salaries. I do have to make a slight adjustment, and it is slight in the part-time salaries because she has one employee who works for minimum wage by his choice. Work for minimum wage and then wage went up, we've made an adjustment there, a small adjustment with part-time uh salaries. The last thing is, um you mentioned a clothing allowance for your part-time employee based on a GEA contract. That part-time employee is not in the GEA. I don't know of any part-time employees that we have a clothing allowance for.
If they're not in the G, if they're in the GEA, we do.
Right, the part-timer would not be, right, oh, the part-timer. So we do a lot of septic work, as I talked about, and you can get your pants and your clothes very dirty, dealing with sewage and dirt. And that's when the primary work should be on the job, sanitary surveys, walking properties and digging the dirt.
The other question, if an office manager position is created and it's from, and the person gets it who's from your office, wouldn't she still be doing some work for the health department?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
We deal with a lot of uh confidential information in the dark.
But you said something about an employee that wanted minimum wage.
We have a part-time employee who's receiving social security.
Obviously.
And over his threshold.
And wants to keep it, he wants to work, wants to get paid. He's an excellent employee. He's a former employee, actually. Um and so.
Just so that's okay.
We have to pay him.
I just can't.
May I have less, please?
And we have to pay him, but he wants to be paid only the minimal amount, which keeps going up. So I have, I have to make that adjustment for this year.
And that's okay with life or anything?
There's no union involvement. It's.
Just an agreement between us and him.
Seven hundred eighty, seven hundred eighty hours a year. It's not.
Okay, you've got that covered. I mean, that doesn't sound.
No, we've had that for several years. I just had to make that.
Appreciate it. It doesn't make it right.
That was right.
It's allowable. It's allowable. Right.
Union wise and all of that. But we got, we have ourselves covered.
Or covering, yes.
Nice question, Anne. Not question, but perhaps going forward, you know, uh there's been a lot of discussion in the land use building over there about office managers, admin, and there, is there some way we can either summarize or clarify exactly what the potential request is or is that part of the reorganization concept?
I'll need, I'll need that from the departments. Like I said, a lot has been discussed in this last.
I'm not necessarily questioning yourself. I just, I try and you know, we're, we're getting it from three or four different scenarios, plus I think, you know, the management has got some input on this and I would love to get that solidified into what your request would be.
An org chart might help, especially for common that Kim made.
Well, I just wonder, how many employees are, are we really going to want to be, what is a long-term plan?
Actually, I have one. I have organizational chart with me.
Okay.
Because you were for the whole building.
For me.
But specifically, your comment, right, your comment about using the admin, you know what I mean? We need to see. We see, we need to see all those connections.
One could, one could handle all three of these. Or do we need two? Or do we need one and a half?
Mitch's point about the physical space also, because, especially we will be having that other building downtown here. I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I want the department to be efficient in a year or two after intergov and everything is up to speed and we're flowing, what is that vision?
Right.
Knowing that it's a moving target.
I'll give you, I'll give you a partial vision of that. Uh engineering, with the change here, engineering is an obvious candidate to move to uh Lathropous.
Do you have an evaluation?
Well, you better be. You talked about this building too.
No, there's, there's not much room in here. Uh we have no room, no room at all here.
Okay.
But the Lathropous, as I would tell you from our uh facility study a couple of years ago, that was always that was always a target for us to use. Uh Park and Rec has some needs uh that may be filled uh with uh the Lathropous. But um the the timing on this uh might, it could be better. No longer uh is, you know, if this plan goes through, Genesis Resource does not necessarily need to be there to support building as it would have in the past. And uh the fact that we are, just that we're going to an online permitting system should make the transition, the transition of moving folks out of there. And that, those are two large offices there which realistically, you could probably put four people in, maybe more uh in into those spaces. And then uh Adam's seat would be freed up as well. So I think there will be significantly less pressure uh on me. And then lastly, um you take a walk over there, you've got to walk around boxes and so forth. Yesterday's department head meeting um had a presentation on off-site storage uh for files uh and um rather than, you know, building more s- uh space to store files, we're going to look at off-site storage, uh which is at eighteen cents per month per box. You could buy an awful lot of storage for ten grand a year uh in terms of some of the stuff. Largely, this is related to the retention requirements for the state of Connecticut, uh the state library system, et cetera. The the amount of paper that we have to hold out, despite uh a good portion of it having already been digitized is crazy. I would, Steve would take you for a walk downstairs, but it might be an ocean violation, you know, go mark through and stuff, but we have such a need to get rid of it. And I think um Town Hall South will benefit um most extensively from a decision to actually move things off-site. Now, that comes with the challenge, that comes with challenges because you gotta you gotta identify and stuff and you gotta catalog it and put it and stuff, but the off-site storage folks uh have resources that we can utilize to assist in that process. Uh and they have tools uh that to help us get there. So and you've heard that workloads are pretty significant uh over in that building. Just taking the time to go through the materials uh which have been stored and added to over years, it's going to be a challenge, but I think there's an opportunity there uh in addition to moving resources out of, out of the building. So I think, I think we're going to.
Question, just how few of them. A while ago, it came to my surprise that we had not completed GIS. When we had said at that point that we were going to complete it, or we sat in the words.
You mean GIS? We have, we have a fully functioning.
There was an issue with intergov that the GIS needed to be completed.
I think he's talking about digitizations and and there, we, we are continuing to work on that process. We have, we, 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 we're moving more. So.
Is it, I don't know if this is still the case, but we found a statement, if you're going to digitize anything, you had to go to Pichon, MicroPichon. Couldn't go to digital, couldn't go to.
There is still, there is still a requirement for some materials to be on on MicroPichon. So that might be bawling things up because it's just that. It's just.
I'm serious.
Yeah.
State says it again, doesn't make it.
No, I mean, we should, well, there's that, but we. No, I mean, we should, well, there's that, but we could, I, I'd spend the time and energy to talk to somebody at the legislature to get that changed. This is.
You know.
CCM has been working on it.
We have done that so many times.
Full, full disclosure, I'm on the state library board, and I have complained as a board member about this. And we can't get nowhere, so I would love to.
Find out.
Find out again and why. It's crazy. Other towns must be having the same thing.
Sony, can I throw a couple of questions at you? Can I get back to the fight over Darka? Before you guys, like, pull their arms out of their sockets. Is it possible to sort of get someone else to get some Tyler training and become more like Darka?
Um, so for, since we've been starting this for three and a half years, going, Darka has actually put all the state forms that we use, that like, you know, for septic inspections, food inspections, they're all part forms. She built those out for us in Tyler. So just, she ended up getting that knowledge. She is, I mean, even having a conversation with her, and you just know, she's been helping Anna a lot and Kim. They both have not had the same admin support that I've had, you know, just continuous throughout the last couple of years. So Darka really has excelled in that position. Um, I also think this, the streamlining process for this, for the customers, the residents coming in would be helpful from somebody who knows the department.
I don't think you have some problem with replacing her.
No, no.
Kind of back of me.
Become knowledgeable with Tyler, with some kind of training with Tyler maybe.
I would ask, I would have to go to Kim because Darka has to train Tyler, so I'm not exactly the first person to ask that question. I've been in a lot of their meetings, and I know that she seems to know the department, all of them, better than I do, and can change things on the fly. As far as how much education that got her to, well, we're talking three and a half years that she's been.
Right, she's been working with a full on. I, I have another question. If the primary reason to upgrade her and change her position is because of the transition danger of, um, isn't that really like a temporary reason? I mean, maybe she just needs an upgrade because it's kind of hot to do, but she's doing great jobs.
It's also the office manager position. So like, for example, when we have new forms systems, instead of having four or five different departments ask the same question, having one person ask the question and give the information to the staff. So it's not just the permit tech. It's also center operating procedures in the office that really should be unified, in my opinion. And there are always revisions. I mean, we know.
I was just, I wanted to comment too.
Darlene's our, our, our munis guru. So, you know, that you put intergov in and it's not click and go for the next ten years. It's, it's updates and new releases and changes, you know, always.
Different, different ways of changing things, and Darka does the same exact thing over there on a daily basis. And the other admin, and in, in regards to your other question about the other administrative assistants having training over there, they've all been trained. Some of them have left. Some of them are still here.
Yeah, I turn over in that, in that building.
We've spent a lot of money on training. And Darka just gets it.
We, we find it's so advantageous that Darlene has agreed to take on that role for us from Munis, and she's done that forever. So she does our training. We, we went to online requisitions and purchasing. She did all of our training for that. This is what we would expect from Darka's position on an ongoing, um, an ongoing basis. So I don't see it, from my T's standpoint, as temporary.
I think the point to John, that could be wrong. We keep talking about Darka. I mean, the position should be moved a person. That's my, my concern. I mean, God, if something happened to Darka, you know, we don't want our land use department to stumble.
Can I actually address, so, you know, Darka's not going to be with us forever. She's of an age, so she's going to be with her a couple of years. I don't know how long she's going to want to work for, but part of this is to build a succession plan for whoever comes in next.
Build up, build an organization. I worry when we start, keep saying, hey.
Understood. And the other thing I just wanted to bring up quickly, actually, to John's point, is firm knowledge of our old system is required to go into the new system. And as we all have heard all over, admin has turned over, except for Darka, and she does have a very good working knowledge of the existing permitting system that's going to have to migrate some information.
She kind of sounds amazing. Might have to get her a cape.
She has the pandemic with me, so.
Pulling things together for you.
What we're effectively doing is recreating the scenario that used to exist in that building years ago. Uh, Georgia Nyedorf used to work in that office, and she was the, she was the effective team lead or straw boss for the, for the admins. Wasn't in her job description, but she was the leader. She was sort of the office manager. She was succeeded by Jeanette Consonine, Jimmy Consonine's mother, who did fulfill the exact same role. Uh, when she retired, no one emerged to, to take over that role. And Darka is finally emerging after several years of that being a void in the building. Because that was both, both Georgia and Jeanette, Jeanine, were, were, they had stepped up and taken on a role that was beyond what they, what their job description said. So. So now, now we're seeing it recreated, but in a more formalized fashion. So much for the history lesson. Sorry, sorry for you guys. I just saw Steve sits back there. Wait, his mom. Anything further?
Thank you for your time.
Matt, I got to check out at this point, and I'll touch base with you about tomorrow. I'm not positive what the schedule is.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
You got it. I'm sorry. All right. Anne's back up for another round. Zoning Board of Appeals.
Zoning Board of Appeals is.
How many jobs do you do for the town?
Too quick about a lot.
Uh, zoning board of appeals, um, I would ask that, well, depending on what happens with affordable housing, that perhaps we absorb this budget into the overall planning and zoning budget. This is the only commission we have in planning a zoning that has its separate, a separate budget, and it's easily, because we administer the zoning board of appeals, um, it's kind of an anomaly to me that it has its own budget, but. They are not paid.
Board of assessment appeals.
Say your part.
I, I said the same thing, Bob.
Say your part.
So the only things that change here, again, is a rightsizing of the advertising and public notice budget. Uh, because of the change in the zoning regulations, I think people have been discouraged from applying for variances. It's a brand new uh, set of regulations, and so to vary it right off the bat is somewhat contrary to the entire effort of rewriting the entire set of regulations. So ZBA applications have fallen off immensely. So I think the, the decrease in the advertising and public notice budget is reasonable, given what we're seeing for the few number of applications we're getting for that commission every year. Any questions?
No, I just want to comment. Um, this has been a long overdue shift in the thinking on planning the zoning board of appeals. Uh, for many years, it was, well, like, these are our neighbors, you know, they've, a hardship. Well, okay, maybe it is hardship, maybe it's not. The, the more traditional application of, of regs and the appeal process has, has been affected. So, as you mentioned, so I think, uh, less people are inclined to, to bring something to zoning board because they know that they're, they're, they're sticking to the letter of the law as opposed to
Yeah.
uh, being sentimental about, uh, what they are doing. Uh, and that was done as a result of some training, and some work.
And we're very tough on you. People come in the office, we say you have to meet a hardship standard, and that standard is very difficult to meet. So I think that discourages.
So MJ, what do you think about moving them?
Well, that was just, I was just going to come with it. Um, Anne and I discussed that. It's, it's not something I really have the authority to do on my own. It would come from, because it is part of our general, but, you know, would come as a recommendation from your board, um, if, if you want us to absorb that.
Sounds like a good idea.
Does that make it a little easier for you?
For me? Not, not, well, not necessarily. I think it's be easier for, for Anne. It's one less budget to manage, but it's.
It's not that difficult.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah.
We might, we might have got out of here ten.
Yes, maybe.
I wouldn't do it because of any ease. It's, Anne feels that she can better manage the whole department, all under one budget. That would be the reasoning to do it. Um, from our end. Yeah. So it's, if, if you would like to move forward with that, then I can, you know, I can make that happen for the first of the year.
We can actually vote on it today, because we didn't have it on the agenda.
Yeah, no, I've just something to think.
Plenty of opportunities over the next few weeks.
It wouldn't go into effect, I mean, you could make it go into effect today if you wanted to, but, you know, but we're looking as a, a recommendation for July one.
It sounds like something we might positively consider.
Yeah, that's something. I just told her we would discuss it today. So we did.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Steve Nyedorf, Town Properties. Hello, good afternoon.
Uh, my budget remains pretty much the same, but I'll go through line by line. Um, the first two salaries, why, by your department. Uh, the next one is overtime, which will remain the same. Uh, stipends, uh, we eliminated that, gave that back. Um, product remains the same. Utilities went down a little. Uh, I think it changed about seven thousand dollars.
I'll take it.
Based on current year and.
The past three winters haven't been bad, so I don't know if that has something to do with it.
A little bit more modest than average.
Oh, it's going to take your three year average now.
Yep. Cell phones remain about the same. Street lighting, that has gone up. Do I assume to the increase in electrical? Fire hydrant rentals has gone up. That's typically that five percent increase. And I think we have three more hydrants.
Here we have.
And the cost for, for hydrant has gone up.
Right.
So that's the biggest increase probably in my budget. Cemetery maintenance remains the same. Clothing allowance remains the same. Repairs and maintenance is actually going down, uh, about five grand. Uh, maintenance supplies, it's going up a little due to the cost of basically cleaning supplies and materials. Um, seasonal decorations remain the same, and vehicle maintenance remains the same. So my budget's going up basically two point one percent, which is really tied into the, the hydrant. It's going up five percent, which is half of my budget, so it's, it's pretty much remaining the same, but.
And that's, and that's, that's, even that's just an estimate of what best we could. But it is the total amount of hydrants we now have.
Where's the total number?
Four hundred.
Four hundred, even four hundred now.
Nice. You were having some staffing issues with illness or getting some, I don't know, are you good right now? We're not asking, I'm not asking if you want more. I'm just saying, are you good with what you have?
Well, he's got everybody in and working.
In and working. That's, that's what I, yeah.
Yeah, nobody out on, so. Um, just a question, and I should have asked this question earlier. The cemetery maintenance, which cemetery?
Every now and then, a little charge comes up. It usually has come down from the previous, like, you know, a stone or something. And I think I've only been charged things to that account, I think, twice.
But it's not for any specific cemetery?
No, it's just something comes down the pipe that they're doing up. The last time.
That's the new approach. Support of private cemetery. Uh, so we'll talk about that.
So it's maybe because of some work that's being done, and a stone is destroyed.
Is honorary or? It was. Fourteen years ago.
The last time.
Yeah, it was. Mazor might have been for Endal Street.
Okay. I, I could see Carl looking to do something for war, war veterans or something like that, but, but we'll take a look.
Yeah, we've always had that line item in there, but I think I, I only remember using it once or twice.
Well, the reason I was asking is, we've been successfully getting, uh, some state grants for abandoned or non-active cemeteries. I think we have two or three of those. And actually, there, there, there's another round of funding coming up, and Tracy Thomaselli and Joel Englander are going to identify the next cemetery to, to go after some more funds for. So, but it has to be, um, an abandoned or inactive cemetery. It can't have an association, an active association. Um, so that's, that's what the grant is specifically for. But that's what I was thinking, if this was something we do every year, we could, you know, where it's.
Can we go back to street lighting?
Yeah.
The thirty seven percent increase. How does that work? What's that for?
We took over the street lighting, right?
We did.
Part of the.
We did. I think some of it now is, I think on Water Street, that we now have a car charger under that lighting bill now, so that it doesn't have its own separate meter. So it's actually on the eleven Water Street. There was no way to separate it without getting another service.
So this increase is due to our paying for a charger now, is that?
We, we pay for our chargers anyway.
Right.
Um, but we, the other, we, we pay under the regular.
The chargers go, build through the utility line.
Right, just the regular utility line, so.
Not the street lighting account.
Where is that?
But we're, but we're getting, we're getting reimbursed, right? For, this isn't, this isn't free charging services. We're, we have, we charge people to charge.
Right, correct.
So, you know, should, should there be a corresponding officer to this or not? Uh, because that is a, that, that, that's a revenue. But we're treating it as general revenue?
Yes.
All right. So, but there is.
I think that doesn't go into revenue.
It goes, oh, but that's offset.
It offsets his utility line.
General in, in his budget, yes. It offsets his budget.
Okay. So that number of additional twenty nine thousand will be offset by something, or is that included offset? We got to look, you got to look at it, right?
Because those are the new ones on Water Street, right?
Water Street and, yeah, because the other one's on us.
Right, this, this one we know about.
The other one is falling under the community settlement.
Where on Water Street are those charging stations?
You know, the town hall parking lot behind, uh, Fresh Market or Marketplace.
Oh, okay.
There's a car track square down there.
We can, we can certainly look into that revenue offset for that.
So I don't understand, I'm sorry, I don't understand the answer to the question of why the street lighting line is up thirty eight percent.
I got from you.
Is it because the new, the charging stations are new?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, most of them have only been in for.
Right, so the charging station, we have it broken down between, you know, different.
Right, and that falls under that bill.
It's the car charging, it's the car charger that's in here, but the offset for the revenue is not. Because this is still looking just the boot stats, yeah.
And we had had the discussion, do I keep it in or not to offset it, but we decided to keep it in.
Well, yeah, well, that's how it's billed, so that's it.
So forgive me. So that's the estimated additional cost of the, the electricity to run the charger.
Correct.
For then when we're charging.
Plus, I'm sure.
The offset has to come in, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Five percent.
Oh, yeah.
So theoretically, we'll recover the nine thousand some odd dollars.
It's not entirely that. It's, it's all the other utilities going up too. I mean, the streetlights themselves are going, so it, it's the entire, the increase in that line is not just, you know what I mean?
So we're going to move, move it.
Yes, we, we will, we will determine what that revenue is for the Water Street end.
Because I think something came up with charging stations, and we were going to make an effort to make sure the rate that we charge would recover.
And I, and I, and I do, and I, I just, it was just a couple of months, I just did it again.
And now, and now with the new winter rates.
Right, yeah.
All right, that may not be super simple, but that was the objective.
Yeah, no, it's, it's easy to do. It's just a matter, you know, just calculating it, and I do it online.
And we can reimburse, we can make money out of it.
Okay.
We could only recoup those costs, so. But we do change it regularly to, um, you know, I don't do it every month.
Our per kilo. Or per kilo.
But yes, you do.
All right, good. Anything further, Steve? Steve, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Board of Assessment Appeals, waiting patiently. You were scheduled for ten-thirty, oh my god.
Good afternoon, everybody, those of you that haven't had the pleasure of meeting yet, I'm Paula and I work in the assessor's office and I'm here to present the Board of Assessment Appeals budget. Basically, most of the line items are remaining the same as last year, with one in particular asking for a hundred and fifty dollar increase in, which is the education and training. With the state of Connecticut implementing new ways that the vehicles are being priced and the way they're going to be able to be appealed and what part of it could be appealed is changed immensely and then also there's a lot of updates to veterans' exemptions, so this way the board members and myself can go get educated to understand it the best and also be able to explain it correctly. It all of us, though.
Just one question, it's probably Mitch, stipends, they remain the same, these are for the elected volunteer.
Right, these haven't changed based on the number of individuals, I guess, seven, seven, six individuals, seven hundred dollars each.
Yes.
Changed.
Is that education online, that's a pretty good bargain. You have to go to a class.
They do workshops, and so most times they run about fifty dollars each per person, so to go to. We're doing one now, but then there's going to be agents available, so we'll need to do them again probably next for February and January as well, so.
Pretty reasonable.
Thankfully.
Right, anything further? Paul, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience.
Nope, my pleasure, have a great day.
Somebody want to let the town council know? Is he hitting the wings?
She want to take Donna?
Councilor, good afternoon.
Right up here, Peter. Sitting in the back of the room.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, everyone. All right, so going through our budget here, we have no part-time salaries in there, and you may recall that was from, we used to have purchasing in our budget, and that's been moved over to finance from, I think it worked out very well. And so occasionally I have a little interaction with them on issues that come up, but basically that I think has been a positive, general legal expense, here's my, what I proposed here. Okay. Yeah, so I think we dropped that down, yeah, so we, I felt like we're able to move that down a little bit, now, you know, I say this every year. Really don't know, it's hard to put a firm number on this, I mean, I, it could be, you know, or get the right lawsuits come in, we don't know, if it's covered by insurance, that's a whole nother thing. So we pick a number, I felt like we could move that down a little bit. Court stenographer, haven't had to use that yet, but it's good to have that there, if we do get into litigation labor. Mitch here, yeah. Yeah, so, went up by ten, I talked to Mitch briefly. Maybe you could fill us in on this as well, but I think what I heard is four major contracts coming up in this year and several individual contracts. So we use outside counsel for that, I think he works very well with Mitch. Again, if everything goes smooth and it all just turns into negotiations and we may keep it under that number, and of course if one goes to arbitration, even one, that number blows up. Judgments and losses, we're keeping the same, that's just for some you know, minor things that may arise, it's not covered by insurance that we can get rid of by resolving it ourselves, I think the last one we did was maybe a mailbox situation, something like that. Assessment reevaluation. So this was a big year for that, because it was a reval year, I don't think we're going to need to spend as much money on that. Came down to ninety, or ninety-five?
I have ninety.
I'll stick with ninety. I had ninety-five, but but coincidentally.
You put in ninety though.
Did I? So one of the good things that happened recently, maybe I adjusted, was a report from the assessor's office that's either resolving, very close to resolving, two of our major properties that had tax deals going on, Solstice was one of them, and then the big medical facility on Boston Post Road. So I'm comfortable with ninety. And then zoning matters, left the same, again, that's one of those things, if it's just advising, planning and zoning and VBA, that's one thing, but as soon as we get into any sort of enforcement actions, those things can blow up as well. Contracted services, me, that's, that's my in-house needle services, kept that the same. And then the other two items, permits dues, education, training, kept the same, those are minor expenditures. I want to answer any questions you folks may have.
Pete, thanks for this budget, on the assessment reval claims, you know, seeing the drop-off is an anticipated drop-off, we look at five-year cycles. The cycle that happens after a reval, that's that first year afterwards is the one that we anticipate getting the most claims against it and therefore the most expense against it. And we've got somewhat consistent trends on the way out, so this is, this is not the last year that we would anticipate seeing a decrease in that line item. However, because of the state shorting the window, we only have four years revales this year, which is the state's effort to get each region to have reval at the same time. So at the same year, so we'll have one in, is it twenty-eight, twenty-seven? I think, right? No, it's in the twenty-six.
I was gonna say twenty-six, but I was thinking that was too quick, but no, it is twenty-six.
Twenty-two. And I, and I think we have another one in twenty-nine, because that's the last adjustment, so.
Right, because we're anticipating those two costs in our reserve to cover both.
Some peers will say, you know, that that's a good thing, because it will more accurately reflect what the current market values are as opposed to outdated market values, but after that, after twenty-nine, we will go back like anybody else to five-year cycles. Anything else for Pete?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. So, Social Services, you've been very patient, we're only an hour.
Check where we were at before I left the building.
Good morning.
Hi, good afternoon. Donna from Social Services. Here to present the budget. So, most of our programs that we run over at Social Services are based on donations, so that's, that's the good part, that nothing of that is in our budget, our food bank is completely based on donations. So, how many changes in the budget? Of course, salaries, I put in this year's salaries as those will change once the new contracts, contracts are ratified, yeah. Utilities. I have a big increase in utilities, last year I requested, I think, forty-four hundred. That was cut to thirty-four hundred, we're actually projected to spend over five thousand for our utilities this year, so it actually left me in a deficit, so I tried to make sure I put enough in to cover the expected increase in utilities for next year. Building maintenance has decreased, I bought our social services sign, it's looking lovely outside the building. She here.
It is, it does, it's nice.
Thank you, yeah, yeah. I requested an allowance in here to replace our carpeting out in our common area, if that can get absorbed in a different budget, like facilities, I'm happy to take it out. And it's necessary, it's an indoor-outdoor carpeting that's probably been in there for I don't know how many years, and it's all ripped, it's taped down, and it's a tripping hazard as we have a lot of elderly people that come in, so I'm just looking to, to replace that. Maintenance service contract increased slightly due to the security monitoring charge, went from twenty-six a month to thirty-three a month. Our copier is increased for finance recommendation for what it's going to cost for the new copier this year. Office equipment budget decreased by a little over thirteen hundred dollars, I don't anticipate any major office equipment this year that will be needed, so I just put a small budget in for that for anything unforeseen. Permits dues, membership decreased due to our notary duties decline, the state assistance programs are no longer, no longer requiring notarization on a lot of their forms, yeah. So I didn't find a need to add another notary in the office, just keep the one. Education and training, no change, and I think I skipped over mileage, that's decreased even more due to more availability of online trainings and meetings, I've also cut down how much the admin drives over to, to the town hall, we don't need to be coming over every day, so. That's all I have.
Any questions?
Just two, two, two simple questions, I was just curious with your copier, did you get a better one, or seemed like a pretty big increase?
I don't know, we can ask Darlene that question.
We're in the process, we've just gone out to bid for new copiers. So we don't have any, I don't have.
Okay, so you don't know which model.
Her machine came off of lease last year. So there was a decrease because she didn't have a lease payment on it. I opted to keep her where she was, because I knew we were going to be going out to bid and to get more machines on one contract and we'd get a better price. So I had her put in the price of what she had before to, for the budget, because we don't have the numbers yet.
Makes sense.
Literally just had the bid opening this morning.
All right, so that, maybe that'll be less than you think.
Yeah, well, hopefully less, but yes, and our copier is quite dated and it jams up, I have to get service calls in there, so that's why I requested to be in on this new purchasing of copiers.
Okay, one more, you don't have like a huge utility line, but it went up a lot, do you know a reason?
Well, Eversource has been out of control with their, with their rates, but actually I had projected for the last fiscal year, I think I put in a request for forty-four hundred. It was decreased to thirty-four hundred.
We cut her budget.
They cut the budget, so I ended up actually being in a deficit for utilities.
I might have encouraged that.
She spent fifty and she didn't.
Right.
So it's running more.
So it's running more true to what I had projected, correct?
She's budgeting what she's really spending, as opposed to what she was budgeting for.
It stood out a little, like a fifty percent increase in utilities.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Donna, I usually send this and I forgot, so just. That'll help with the.
We appreciate it.
So for time, I'm not sure if you guys want to keep going, the last few budgets are us, you know what I mean? So.
I'd rather knock them, if you guys have the time, I'd rather knock them off today than that.
I just didn't know if maybe if people had to leave, so I just was giving that option, but we will move on, so Karen, you're up.
We always give Karen a hard time.
Just try to hit the highlights of the worst lesson budget. Expenses and traveler up, this past year, we had fees for the attendance at the CCM conference go up by fifty dollars a person. So that was the biggest part of that increase. It's also, we also pay for the first selectmen and other board, selectmen board finance members to go to leadership conferences, support community-based programs, for example, in February, the Sherling Chambers having their excellence awards, and I think one of the honorees is going to be the Gilbert River Faith Ministry, so that would be something that the first selectman would attend and that will go on. postage is up based on the quote that the tax collector got from quality data for mailing the tax bills, and also the postal service is projecting increases for twenty-twenty-five, so. And some of our bulk permits, I think the fees have gone up for some of those. Permits dues and subscriptions, Cog had a slight increase this year in their fees, and we also have not heard yet on CCM what their dues are going to be, so I was sort of. Education and training is a Matt is part of the certified municipal officials program, and that runs every three years, and so he's going to be certified again for another three-year period, and that starts this year. Also, training for various department members, and one thing, generally I go every year to the Freedom of Information Conference. If possible, I think it would be nice if more, especially we have a lot of new clerks, some new admins for them to go, because it's very, it's a full day program and it's really beneficial, so that would be great. Memorial Day is up a little bit, I just estimated based on past expenses for recent lives from Memorial Day cemeteries. Miscellaneous increased that's supplies for some of the smaller boards and commissions, a sustainable task force, for instance, might need, they would want to yard signs for their cafe, that would come out of that line. Also, we contribute towards the Gilbert Fair Parade, we have employee recognition programs and things like the holiday luncheon expenses related to evictions. So that all comes out of that line. And then probate has increased quite a bit, and I think I shared on ClearGov, the memo from the probate court judge, they've seen an increased workload, increased operating costs and fiber optic installation, so and that is a shared expense with Madison, we pay half and Madison pays half.
But we've, we've been bringing in very good revenue.
Yes, no, no, we have, actually, because of, thanks to Mary Jean, put us in touch with Gov deals, and so we've been auctioning off a lot of equipment, vehicles, tonne, and so it was. Thank Mary Jean for that.
Questions?
The boarding commission secretary line went up a lot, was that just because the affordable housing wage increases?
No, it's the increases for everybody, first of all, several boards and commissions included here under the selectmen's budget. The major increase Jonathan is a good catch. The Affordable Housing Committee did not have a line last year, they're also anticipating a lot of meetings. So I put that secretary in for.
It's now a commission, Jonathan, as, as the posted committee, it became the commission at that point, it was appropriate to get a recording secretary.
All right, so now we put in a hundred hours, there's twenty-one hundred dollars of that increases for that one commission.
Which I think may be high.
Yeah.
Based on the number of meetings they've scheduled, I'm not sure.
It's just one meeting a month, but there's been.
How many subcommittees are there?
Yes, but some of those, I, it should go down.
Yeah, we can certainly review that as we.
We're gonna be reviewing it tomorrow. Particularly the Affordable Housing Commission's budget, which had the opportunity to work with the commission, so last week, we weren't counting them, but the secretary of recording, recording secretary is in their budget as well as, so, and they know that we're anticipating moving over these items elsewhere. I just wanted them to have the opportunity to present, so that the community is aware of what that commission is attempting to do, what their charge and their mission is and how they may need to be supported, so they will have the opportunity tomorrow to make their case, but more than likely, we will be shifting most, if not all, of their items to another line item, maybe it's just like this office.
And she's there, I realize all commissions are different, but is there an average of what a recording, you know, is there?
Depends on the board of commission.
The zoning person would.
In that particular, you know, you got standing. In that particular, you know, you've got standing building committee, which is a hundred hours, you've got human rights commission, which is a hundred hours, and I put this one down for a hundred hours. So, you know, it's not, it's not unheard of, but it is more than most, but there are some that are even more. And then there are also some like the zoning board that are included in the, in the admin salary, so we don't even see how much is involved there. Because it goes and they take comp time otherwise.
I apologize, I was drifting off a little bit, can you just tell me postage again, I think I was thinking about lunch.
So, um, I think you'll see, um, on ClearGov, that there were some estimates that, uh, the tax collector got from quality data on their estimates for postage. To mail out the tax bills, and then we also, um, pay for bulk permits for many departments, it's based on past usage of, um, our postage. And postal increase supposedly in twenty-twenty-five, I'm not necessarily shooting the first-class mail, but they are projecting an increase in twenty-twenty-five.
Okay, sorry, he, he went through it.
Okay, that's right.
Different departments have to have their own permits, we can't have one.
No, we have, no, we have several different ones, so there's, we have three or four different permits.
Like three.
Yeah, so there's one for the tax and the registrar, um. I think that it's a postal service. But it's the way they operate their, their permits.
Yeah, but even, yeah, what you're doing is you're buying the use of that postal service.
Right, but there's different types of permits. Yeah, yeah.
And they use your permit.
Right, but some are, there, there, there's like three different permits, like bulk mail.
Is for bulk mail, one is for first class.
And, and there's.
And then Park and Rec has their own, I think, like the library.
You gotta check and, it's a permit, you can use it for any grade, that's the rate, bulk, first class, no, that's the rate, it's not the permit. You have the permit, permit is for printing it versus putting stamp on it.
Right.
It can be bulk, it can be nonprofit, it can be first class.
We'll look into it with the postmaster, sure.
We just got like a million dollars right there, didn't we?
Four hundred bucks.
In Guilford, they have one person who does some piece, and she's very rarely available, so everyone's communication is easily, easily crossed on that. So, it, it might make sense. Anything, thank you, Karen. You don't even have to move your seat.
Um, so, uh, full-time salaries, um, all but one position, mine is under, uh, negotiation, uh. This year, that's, uh, so that's my increase showing there, uh, we increased expenses in travel, the, um. The amount of mileage is going up, um, and, and just traveling in general. We've come down on office equipment, um, we had some expenses last year that, um, took care of so that we don't need them this year. Uh, the publication of the budget, which is a big one, we kept that the same, hopefully that'll fall in line. The next is the annual audit, the audit is going out to bid, we have no idea where, um, that is going. I'm estimating a ten percent increase, I, I might be low, uh, the way auditing services are right now, um. So, we, we should have an idea of what that number is, is going to be before we finalize, so we'll come forward once that is done. Um, office supplies, um, we have a, a slight increase just because of pricing, uh, permits dues and subscriptions. We have.
Slight increase.
Yeah, just a slight increase, I'm just trying to see if it was something in particular, um, and same with education and, and training just for increase. Um, costs, we have some additional, um, trainings, uh, that we are still, uh. Looking and seeking out for the purchasing aspect of, of our department, um, as we continue. It was nice of Peter to say everything was, um, going smoothly, I think it has, Darlene's done a phenomenal job, um. Bringing that into our department, but we're, we're continually looking for training in that area, um, we are, uh, I'm. Taking, uh, also in training is, is for Munis, uh, it's in my. Uh, my budget here for finance, typically each year I take somebody outside of the department, so we are bringing, um. The HR admin, um, to Munis so that she can, uh, uh, look at some of the advancements, um, between, um. H, HR and, and payroll, so, um, we have an increase of just under two percent, um, in, in that budget. Um, on the revenue side. I hate this number, I hate this number, but I have increased the budget to an even million. Um, I do anticipate bringing in over a million this year, uh. Brought that up from nine seventy up, up to a, a million, um, again, and, you know, it's, it's all based on interest rates. But since, since I am on target to bring in over a million, I did bring that up, um, certainly something we can discuss, the board of finance level. Um, as, as well, um, but, that, that's what I currently have in the, in the projections.
It's an art, not a science. Any comments or questions?
So salaries is all set for your department?
No. No, just mine. Everybody else is GA or GSA?
Or visual contract.
Right, oh, she, GSA.
No.
And that's coming soon, you'll tell us about the reserve?
Yeah.
Correct, yes.
Tomorrow.
All set? Thank you. Switch hats, debt service?
Debt service. So I gave you a couple things for you to see. Uh, so, um. So as far as the, the budget itself is concerned, um, I am, overall, debt between interest and principal will be going up. Um, a little over six thousand dollars, it's really, uh, the energy performance contract that is increasing. Um, not our general debt, cause, so if you look at the debt chart that I've given you, we're pretty flat. Um, again, using credits, premium credits that we've received to mitigate, um, increases. And, uh, so I continue each year to kind of like to go down, um. But, uh, you know, it's just, every year, we're adding more bonds, you know, each year, so, um. I haven't been able to go down, but I have been able to keep it flat, as you can see, um. On the graph, as I've been saying, that in twenty-thirty, we have a, a, a drop that, so my goal. Should the thirty million dollar project for Public Works go through, um, it would be my goal to. Um, project out the first big bumps closer to that twenty-thirty year. So that the current drop we have would be, uh, you know, used to sustain that project. So that would be the goal, um, moving forward, um, and we could probably work, work that out, depending on. So, other, other than that, um, that's my debt story.
Love your favorite debt chart.
My favorite debt chart.
A bunch of presentations.
I know, I like to see it go down, but I haven't been able to make it go down.
It's not going up like it has, so. Alright, questions?
That green arrow is not an aspirational target.
That's just showing you that that's the current year, yeah, that, yeah, that's the year we're talking about.
Any other questions? Alright, well, thank you, uh. Probably an hour over, but, um, I'll entertain a motion for a drink. Uh, all in favor? Thank you all.